All right, welcome to the Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, Hamilton Planning Board Meeting. On the agenda tonight is the continuation of this Senior Housing's Permit Public Hearings for Chibaco Capital Partners LLC, the development of the property located at 133 Essex Street. And then Board Business, upcoming schedules, agenda, et cetera. So, this meeting is going to be an internal meeting only. We, the applicant is not going to be presenting any information. The public is not going to be participating in the process as well. And there are no lawyers participating in this as well. We're going to be talking about Board Business, process, bylaw, and a couple of issues that have arisen around this process. So, let me be specific about what we're talking about tonight. Since for public process and open meeting law, we have to be very careful about what we are and what we are not talking about. Basically, we're not going to be discussing any specific issues as it relates to the actual blasting, blasting plan, hydrology, stormwater management, or any specific issues related to this project that we may, that we have discussed or were going to discuss previously. So, we're going to engage in an open discussion among ourselves that are before us, excluding hydrology blasting plans and commentary relative thereto. We will take discussion with the Hamilton's Fire Chief, Ray Brunet, regarding the process for securing a permit to remove ledge using controlled blasting. We're not going to talk about the blasting or blasting plan. The petitioner is not going to be speaking. No butler will be asked, allowed to ask or speak or presenting any information during this. And no representatives, as I said, of the petitioner or the butlers will be allowed to speak. We have to do that in order to maintain, maintain the process and comply with open meeting law. So, Patrick, I don't know if you have anything you want to say, or I can just launch into the...
I did want to briefly update the board, just so there are no surprises. We have unfortunately had a subconsultant pull out of participating in serving us as part of the peer review. Tada and Howard, who was the entity that was undertaking the, the review of the blasting plan, hydrology plan, as well as hydrogeology review, for some reason, they've decided to no longer participate. They had provided us with one peer review. They had been in a number of meetings. It's a bit of a mystery to me, as well as to our main consultant, so... But in any event, the consultant and I are searching for another group to assist in the review of those elements. That being the case, I think that we need to alter our schedule some, so we focus on, on items like traffic and parking, site plan kinds of things, additional, which have already been completed in the interim period. So, we will get a consultant to assist us in those areas that I'd mentioned. We've got the gap in now, unfortunately, but, you know, I think at our next meeting, we should focus on traffic and parking and possibly some site design. So, I did want to mention that to the board tonight, as well as to the public.
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry to hear that. And TEC, they were consultants to TEC, right?
That's correct.
And I'd be curious to see how far they got and what they're going to be billing TEC and then subsequently the applicant for work they're not delivering, so...
Right.
That's unfortunately going to delay this probably a good month to six weeks, I would guess.
Yeah. I, I don't know the duration of what a delay might be, but any, to me, is unfortunate and certainly something I wish weren't happening.
Yep. So, okay, that is what it is, and TEC will be looking for a new subconsultant to carry out those tasks. All right. Before we, and I'm going to suggest that we allow Ray to make a presentation, but I'd like to get a couple of housekeeping tasks taken care of before we do that. So, Ray, if you could bear with us.
Sure, absolutely.
First of all, I have received, and I believe the town clerk has received, the Mullen report for Pat Norton's absence, and you've submitted the appropriate documentation that you've reviewed, the minutes and tapes, so that you're clear on that. Okay. The next item relates to a letter from the council for the Chibaco Woods Group, and it relates to a Facebook posting, I guess, last week. And so, that's something we're going to address here. We've had both the applicant's attorney and our attorney, the town's attorney, are well aware of this and have advised us on the need to discuss this, so that it gets into the public record. Attorney Eliason referenced that Richard Boroff had posted in, on Facebook, a factually inaccurate description of the special permit, special permit...
Process.
Well, it's not really the process, the elements of the special permit and what governs the evaluation and granting of a special permit. And what Richard actually described was our site plan review, not the special permit. A special permit is a discretionary permit by the board. So, Ms. Eliason has requested that he be, recuse himself from the rest of this process. Neither, our town, our town attorney doesn't believe that's appropriate nor needed, in that he did not indicate during or in his posting any particular opinion about the project. He did post incorrect information about how a decision comes about. So, for the purposes of reading this into the record, Richard, I'm going to turn this over, and I want you to read what you posted in its entirety.
Okay. This, I believe, was on the 7th of December. That may be incorrect.
No, because today is December 7th.
Yeah, okay, so that's the day I printed it out.
The 29th.
The 29th, okay, thank you. So, speaking, quote, "Speaking as a planning board member, but without the permission or knowledge of the board or chair, and giving information concerning the law that could easily, could as easily and will be given in a planning board meeting." Period. The planning board, one, cannot deny a special permit, which I am assuming this is. Two, it can only condition a special permit. Three, it cannot apply conditions to the extent that the additional cost to the applicant would be so onerous as to make it too expensive or costly to continue with the permit. The previous is all essentially, quote, "general knowledge," unquote, information. Please consider it as you make your comments on this forum. It does not reflect any of my personal thoughts, opinions, et cetera, concerning this topic. And that was the extent of what I wrote.
Okay. So, I think this is a great teaching moment. Facebook, in my personal opinion, is a trash can, and you throw stuff in it, and stuff comes flying back at you. And it's probably good for finding pets and contractors, and that's about it. If any board member engages in Facebook discussing this, it's just going to be bad news. It just never ends well, and so I would request that no member use Facebook, Twitter, or any other social media to make comments about the process, about the people, or any other aspect of this, because it only jeopardizes the entire board's integrity and credibility with the public. I don't know if anybody has anything else to say, but...
I will make some comments. I reviewed the...
Hey, Marnie, could you use the...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
The social media policy that appears on the webpage for the select board. And one of the items with respect to this type of a post is to, once you've recognized that you've committed an error, that you take steps to correct that error. And I actually found the post rather troubling, because there was no mention of site plan review. It was all about the special permitting process, and every single statement was wrong. And the final statement, because the prior statements were wrong, I don't think the disclaimer had much integrity at all. So, I take this very seriously, and I think that it does reflect some measure of potential bias.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment, too. I think, as far as I know, the issue is two things. Does it show Mr. Boroff being predetermined in any way by virtue of this? And the other thing is whether he can remain objective in a final decision on it. Those, I think, would be the, the two issues, maybe, that would be of concern here. And I don't have an opinion one way or the other on, on either one of those, you know, whether that's true or not, but I'm just wondering the, in kind of resolving this issue also, whether our rules and rules of, that we went over at the beginning of, certainly my term here, rules and procedures of the planning board, if there's anything in there that addresses this particular type. I think I recall a discussion about the press, about who is, who becomes a spokesperson for the planning board, and I believe it was the chairman only, as I recall, but I'm not sure of the exact wording on that, so...
The general, the general rule is that I'm the official, the chair, as chair, I'm the official spokesman and source of quotes, if any kind of media or public forum. Members of the board can certainly speak in the public to the media or other people, but they have to specifically indicate that they are not speaking for the board, that they are not speaking in an official capacity, and that anything that they say are personally their own thoughts, ideas, and opinions. So, I, and I'm also concerned that this happened, because again, as I said, it jeopardizes the credibility of the board. Looking at what Richard said was factually incorrect. He was quoting what is essentially site plan review. I look at his last sentence here, which I think is kind of, "It does not reflect any of my personal thoughts, opinions, et cetera, concerning this topic." I think that kind of says it all, is he's not indicating where he stands on this, he's indicating that, mistakenly, that he thinks this process is governed by site plan review as opposed to special permit.
I think that's generous, because there's no mention of site plan review in this statement. And if in fact he believes that the special permit has to be granted, and he assumed he was talking about a special permit, which I find troubling, because every agenda that we've had in the past two or three months has referenced a special permit. So, I, I don't think the disclaimer has, has any real integrity. Because he's, he's essentially confused the two, but without the immediate correction or any indication that he's really talking about site plan reviews, it, it just puts out erroneous information to the public.
Yes, we've, we've acknowledged that.
Well, I mean, I think it has a detrimental effect, and it, it doesn't reflect well on the planning.
I certainly agree with you, and that's why we're talking about it in public. And it certainly is unfortunate that it occurred, but again, I think it's unfortunate, but I don't think it's, rises to the level of disqualifying Richard from continuing in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to make clear that I think the last sentence specifies that it had nothing to do with the issue itself. And if you're trying to blame, make it that case, you're out in left field. It's incorrect. You can't.
Well, well, Mr. Boroff, what I would suggest you do is you make a supplemental statement on that site, indicating your confusion, and, and go from there.
That's possible.
Because that would be consistent with the social media policy that appears on the select boards.
I can well do that, but I want to remind you again, it does not reflect any personal opinions or thoughts on the project itself. Keep that in mind, and don't, please don't confuse the two.
All right. So, I think if you do make that posting, it certainly would go a long way to...
That'll be fine. No problem with that.
So...
And let me request that once you place that statement, that you bring it, a copy of it back to the board, so you can read that into the record. So, that's part of the file, and we can close that matter out.
That'll be fine. And what I would also like to do, Patrick, if I may, is use you, and what I write, I want to submit it to you, get your approval, unless you want me to send it to Rick instead, and make...
I think, actually, no. I think it would be much, it should come from you.
It will.
No, no, I understand, but I mean, without further board involvement, because the board was not involved in the original statement, does not, does not endorse the original statement. And so, I, I think you just make it clean and simple, and you state that you were incorrect, confused, or otherwise, and that you correct the record and say that special permit is not, is not, does not fit the criteria you described previously.
Is not what?
Doesn't fit the criteria you described previously.
Okay.
What you described was site plan review. All right. So, I think we can move on now. So, out of courtesy to Ray, who came at 6:30, thinking the meeting started then, so he's been here for a while, I'm just going to ask Ray if you can summarize the process by which an applicant comes to you, and what you do in the process of review and, and deciding whether to issue a permit or not.
Okay. So, first of all, I want to say that blasting permits are quite commonplace in, in Hamilton and throughout the area. There, there have been many sites over the past 32 years that I've been involved with the fire department in, in many different roles, and have seen many permits pulled, and have done blasting details and watched the process throughout. You know, they come to us for, you know, blasting for septic systems, foundations, pools, you know, gymnasiums, like when they did the whole process over in Pingree School, that was like a month and a half of blasting. Britton's, his compost area that he uses primarily now was, was a huge hill, and it was all ledge, and he did quite a bit of blasting there. So, you know, Hamilton has seen its share of blasting over the years. What an applicant typically does is they come and they, they file what's an FP6 form, it's the whole application. And within that application, they have to submit the certified competency, which allows a company to handle, transport, blasting materials, and what's called a magazine. And this is all done through the Department of Fire Services in Massachusetts. They, they're the ones that regulate the magazine, they're the ones that license, give them the certificate of competency to allow them, for this company to do that. They have to show that to, to us as well. They also have to show us their user, their explosive certificate, which each and every blaster has to have. So, I have to have a copy of at least one blasting license to file that, that permit. Then they also need a dig safe number, which most construction sites have anyway, because they're, they're obviously digging, they're blasting, they have to do a survey and notify all the utilities and whatnot, so they actually need a dig safe number, and we have to, to have that on file. They also need the blasting plan. All sites that do blasting have to have a blasting plan, and they also have to do a survey of the, at least 250 feet around the property line. That's, that's the minimum, and they have to survey all the properties and make sure, they actually have to do a survey if each and every homeowner wants their property surveyed, and they should have them surveyed, because if there's any damage before, or they want to claim any damage after the blasting, they have a third-party consultant come in and check each and every building that the property owner want, want to have them checked. So, they, they have like a baseline, you know, if a foundation was cracked before, then hopefully that doesn't get worse, or it wasn't cracked. They need proof, basically, to file a claim, a 296 form, if there was a complaint against the, the blasting company or the developer. And obviously, they need that blast analysis, because they have to keep the control of the, the vibration by the use of a seismograph down to 133 decibels. So, they have to have a blasting plan, they have to, in the, within the blasting plan and the analysis, they need to know what type of rock it is, how much material they need to use to blast, which way to do it, what direction, and they modify it as they move along. So, they, we also need that to file this permit. Blast analysis. Then we also put regulations on, you know, what days they can blast, hours they can, they can blast, you know, and the planning board has, has the, the, not the planning board, but sorry, the, the bylaws have, have the blasting, the, the times when people can, is that 7 o'clock to start any type of work, and what time, what times they can go to? I think it's 7:00 at night, and we can actually stringent that up within, within the fire department permit. And obviously, there's a $50 fee for the permit, and we also have to have a MOU, a memorandum of understanding between the blaster, the developer, and the fire department, because they have to have a fire watch, or a blasting detail, they call it, on-site, anytime that there is any type of explosives, anytime they're going to be doing any blasting, from the, from the time that the materials arrive on scene until that the explosive materials leave. So, that, that's technically the process of how they go about to pull a, a permit with us. And we usually take about 10 days to review the materials they give us, check on the licenses, make sure everything's active, and then we will file the permit and let them know that, whether the permit's active or not. So, any, you guys have any questions for me at all? I mean...
I, I assume, and it appears to me to be the case, that your procedures closely track the applicable code of Massachusetts regulations.
Yep. Absolutely.
It almost looks like they're incorporated by reference.
I'm sorry, it's, you're kind of muffled.
It almost looks like...
I don't think that's going to help me, but I know.
It almost looks like you've incorporated 520 CMR1.
That's exactly what it is. It's 520 CMR1. We, that's, that's my, the rules and regulations that, that I have to follow.
Right, because I read that, and I'm going through, through this, and I think to myself, this looks very familiar. So, thank you for that.
I mean, that's what my job is, is to follow the state, you know, code and law, I mean...
Right, right, no, I, I understand that.
So, you know, then, once they get the permit, there's a whole process that takes place. I was talking to you about, you know, the blasting detail, and we actually oversee the safety of the job site, if we find any violations, you know, that, what they call fly rock, or, you know, we also monitor the seismographic readings that come out, we take pictures, we actually take a video. Actually, it's the responsibility of the blaster to take the video, but I've taken video before, just, you know, in different areas. And all this stuff is supposed to be logged, he's supposed to have a, a blasting log of every time he does a blast, what the seismographic readings are, have a video, have it all put together. He's supposed to report those findings within 24 hours to the fire department. If anything were to go wrong whatsoever, we immediately notify Department of Fire Services. This, the whole blasting process has been refined over the years. It's very regulated, it's stringent, he's, every company that I've ever worked with, main drilling, blasting, whether it be Akerly, a couple of small ones, I can't remember their names, they're very professional, they know what they're doing, they stay well with, under, well under the limits. You know, they don't want to be fined, they don't want their license pulled, this is their livelihood. Like I said, over the past 32 years, I've, you know, I've seen a lot of blasting in town. People just don't realize what's, you know, what's happening, because, you know, they just don't, they don't see it going on, but it, it does occur... they just don't, they don't see it going on. But it does occur within the, you know, development of a town, and it happens. I know everybody's up in arms about it, but, you know, I've seen, we did the water line on Chabaco Road, the town blasted for a couple of weeks. There's been homes on Villa, it's off Chabaco Road, there are, you know, did blasting. 360 Chabaco comes to mind, I'm trying to remember the person's name, it was Mike Palozola, he did a ton of blasting, put his foundation in, and his septic system. So it's an everyday occurrence, you know, and it happened within, you know, this whole area over by Chabaco.
Is it fair to say...
You've got to speak up, Bill. He can't hear you. I can't hear you.
Okay. It seems, as a novice, that the amount of area on this particular project that's going to be blasted, several acres of ledge, is orders of magnitude larger than anything that's been done before, or am I mistaken? There's a lot of ledge in this plan.
There is, there is a lot of ledge here. But, you know, I want to say the biggest project that I've seen, the two biggest projects I've seen are Peter Britton's and Pingery School, when they did the gymnasium. That's probably, Pingery School's probably one of the largest, and that had to have been two acres, okay, you know, in its entirety. And they were blasting for six, about six weeks, drilling and blasting. And, you know, it was a good-sized area, and the elevation was incredibly high that they had to take down, and they had to take it down quite away, subsoil to pin it and be able to put a proper foundation in. You know, and that's within another wetland area. And, you know, everything, I don't want to say everything seemed to work out fine, but there were no issues. I haven't, I haven't seen any issues whatsoever with a blaster, with a fly rock, or, you know, people pulling a 296, which is the, a complaint form against a blaster the whole entire time I've been here. I've never seen it. They, like I said, they do a very good job, they know what they're doing, they're very professional. And they stick to the plan. And like I said, as they follow the plan, as they take the data with the seismograph readings, they know if they're, they need to come down with their limits, you know, how much explosives they put in each, in each hole, every, you know, shot, or whether they shortcut the shots, and they do them smaller, because they kind of peel it away. Where years ago, they used to do, drill deeper holes, put more blasting material, more explosive, and try to get it done quicker. It's more of a science now.
I just want to caution anybody, we're not talking about Chabaco here. We're talking about the process of getting a blasting permit. So just be careful what the question is that you're asking.
First of all, have I said anything to...
No, no, but Bill was skirting it, so I just wanted to stop and warn people that we're not talking about Chabaco blasting plan tonight.
I've got a pure blasting question. I've lived in town for over 40 years, I think, now. And I'm in the central part of town, on Moynihan, and I've never...
Well, I'm in the simple town, part of town, too, so...
Okay. My point is, I've never noticed or realized at any time there was any blasting going on. And I'm not all that far from where Peter Britton is. What's, so my question is, how far, when there's a blast, how far should residents feel, be aware of, the blasting taking place? Not far at all?
You come to the edge of 250 feet, you're not going to feel it.
That's the answer to the question. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to set up, any site has two seismographs. Like I said, it's very regulated. We watch the readings, we record the readings, the fire department, basically to keep everything in check, to make sure everybody's doing their job.
So 250 feet?
Every, every time that I've done it, you know, you know, they have the blasting mats they put on, they put them on a certain way. As far as fly rock, I haven't really seen any fly rock whatsoever come from any, any of these sites that I've ever, I've ever witnessed.
Fly rock being rock that flies away from the blast.
Fly rock that flies away, gets, you know, they don't cover the blast properly, and you'll get pieces of rock go 100, 100 feet, it could go 100 feet. These guys, you know, the ones I have seen, the ones I've actually had firsthand experience with, I've never seen any of it, because they do such a, you know, wonderful job. They know what they're doing. Like I said, you know, you get a complaint, you're going to lose your ticket, you lose your livelihood.
Thank you.
Patrick?
Ray, thanks for making your evening available to us. We greatly appreciate it. Let me ask you, in the instance, if someone makes a complaint as to they think that their property has been damaged, what is the process by which that gets addressed? I know you've mentioned some of the pieces of that effort, but in total, what is that process, just so people understand it?
So I advise everybody to get that survey done, because if you're going to make a complaint, you need documentation, you know, you need a starting point to say, this is what I had before, and this is what I've been left with now. And you need to, if you do feel like you've had damage, then you need to fill out what's called an FP296 form, which gets filed with the Department of Fire Services. And as soon as that's done, the Department of Fire Services gets involved. They could shut down the site for a short, depending, dependent on the severity. Obviously, they're going to call the fire department to find out, did this actually happen? But they're going to come out and investigate. And their code enforcement bureau will be out, I would say, within hours of form being filed, whether it be online, or a phone call to them, and to our dispatch. I'm mandated to report it as well, so is the blaster. It's all in, any site plan that you, you would see, it states that in there.
Thank you, Ray.
Ray, another question. If you're notified as a resident that there's going to be blasting near your property, what kind of a person do you hire to do the survey before the blasting?
You don't hire anybody. The company has to hire a third party to come in and do the surveys on each property. They pay for it, it's independent, just like you do the peer review. It's basically the same, same types of situation. They have no ties with the blasting company or the developer. They come in, and they'll do it for the town, and that's why I'm saying, you can, they can actually, homeowner can refuse to have this done, but it doesn't behoove them to do that. They want documentation. So I would advise anybody that's going to have blasting near their property, have this survey done. And they're supposed to do it within 250 feet of the property line, not from where the blasting is.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. And so just a question about the survey that gets done to develop a blasting plan. When they get into, and that informs the permit they receive, and when they get into the process, if there's an existing condition that wasn't envisioned as part of the survey they had done, like ledge deeper than they thought, or to a greater extent than was surveyed, is there an amendment process, or how does the, how does that scope get analyzed?
I don't deal much as far as the plan goes, but what they usually give for specs is the minimum, like if they're going to blast a certain amount, those specs are the minimum. And then they can go from there. As far as amending it, I don't really get into, I'm just overseeing the safety aspect of it. If they're going to have to blast further and further, that's not under my purview.
Got you. And maybe the process, is a blasting permit allowed to be pulled prior to a building permit? I know that sometimes you can get a permit for excavation prior to an overall building permit to get started with the works, but maybe that's a question for the board more than the chief. Just as an overall scope of the job, the sequence of all the permits.
So it would have to get, obviously, get the approval of the planning board to move forward with the whole project before I could allow a blasting permit.
Right.
I mean, we all work in conjunction with each other, you know, we're teammates, and that's, so I would not issue a blasting permit unless I had all these other factors in play.
I guess I was specific about a building permit, you know, blasting permit before the building permit, if that's allowed or not, but... Thank you.
Ray, I have a question. You've probably, I don't know if you've seen the applicant's blasting plan, and I don't want your comment on that. But when a blasting plan has been submitted, and it's part of the discussion of the board, and there's a peer reviewing going on, will you be reviewing that as well?
I've reviewed other plans, and I would review this one, you know, read through it and find out how long they're planning on blasting, what materials they're planning on using for, to blast with, whether it's an emulsified, water-resistant compound or not. I mean, yeah, I go through all of that.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is, I'm thinking, once we get to that discussion, and the applicant has finished their blasting plan, and we've had a peer review, do their peer review, I think it would be helpful for you to come back, and once you've had a chance to review that information, to see if you've got any concerns, or issues, or thoughts about additional precautions, or issues that we should consider.
Yeah, I most certainly can do that. I don't dive heavily into the technical aspect of how they blast, more into the aspect of the safety issue, of what's going on around the site, and make sure that no one gets hurt, and it's done the way that the code wants it to be, that process.
Yep. Okay, good. Any other questions from the board? I don't think so. Okay. Oh, very good.
Nice to see you all, even though we're not seeing everybody's smiling faces. Have a good night.
Smiling faces and fogged glasses. Okay, all right, we'll move on now. Want to next move on to the bylaw checklist. Patrick sent around his version of that, and I want to make sure that board members have had a chance to review it. If you have questions or concerns, or there's been a mistake or an omission, this would be the time to bring it up, because this is now the controlling document for review and discussion of any outstanding issues.
I know Marnie had a couple of items where I was a little off-base.
Well, Marnie, wait a minute, you're on.
I think there were just two. Do you have, but when I reviewed the minutes, I did not, and actually, in looking at your checklist versus my checklist, I think I can safely say that I, that there were open, there were bylaws open to discussion, either for lack of information, or because there were questions. And so in the minutes, it didn't reflect that there would, which way the bylaw was determined, question or information. It just said further discussion. So I think one of the things I mentioned was expansion, and that was just something that would have to be in the condo documents. It wasn't critical. And do you have the other one I mentioned?
Not on me.
Oh, sorry. But regardless, I don't know that that one was a critical one, but I think that the, the subject, well, the bylaws that we should discuss are ones that either require more information, or members have questions about how they, how they apply. I think in some sense, it's a semantic argument, because obviously, if you have questions, you might have, need more information. Alternatively, you can have a lot of information, but there still will be questions. Do I state that accurately? So in going through your checklist, I think that, that members can, can pretty much indicate whether they had questions or they needed more information. I don't, I don't think that the minutes made any determination about that.
Before we get to that, the question was, were they accurately recorded in the categories of satisfied, information needed, or board questions? We first have to get the document to make sure that it accurately reflects...
Well, in Patrick's, he had no questions.
So again, I'm asking the board, does the board have any corrections as to the recording of SI or questions?
Yeah, I have a number, a number of questions on that. And what I thought we could do maybe is work through the minutes, although we haven't approved the minutes yet, so maybe we don't do that. But I thought, because that was a pretty good summary, that would resolve maybe the information question issue that Marnie raised, which I think is legitimate. The two are not the same, and there is a distinction between the two. But, and I can go through the checklist, but then we'd have to go back and cross-check with the, with the minutes, which is a little more complicated.
Well, I don't think we do. What I'm asking, because we have some very diligent, detail-oriented people, is are the S's, the I's, and the question mark accurately recorded in the categories as displayed in the document that Patrick circulated to the board?
Okay, I'll start then. 8.2.12, general compliance. There actually, there's a statement right after that particular title, and then there's a list of subtopics, 1, 2, and so on. There was a separate line for the text, and that was left blank, and I have a question in that question mark. So 8.2.12...
Hold on, hold on. I'm looking at 8, you're referencing 8.2.12, general compliance?
Right.
There's prefatory language in that bylaw. And I think that's what Amel is referring to.
So does that mean that our chart needs to include that, that extra item, or what is it?
It may well.
When it was set up, it was set up so that there is a slot there, or a box to check, under the title, and then under each of the subtopics. And that was left blank, as if, as if the whole section was satisfied, but...
Ah, thank you.
And in particular, it draws reference to the groundwater protection overlay district.
I have that language in front of me, and I would be happy to read it. It provides, "A proposal must comply with all other applicable town bylaws and the applicable rules, regulations, and requirements of all departments, boards, and commissions, including the special sensitivities of the historic district and the groundwater protection overlay district." And then, following that prefatory language, there are the three items that are listed on the checklist.
Yeah, and that's the one I checked, which would be the...
Prefatory language.
Prefatory language, yes, right. Shall I go on?
So...
Or do you want to go?
No, that's fine. I'm just, I'm trying to catch up to, and look at the actual reference to 8.2.12. And could you, then, could you please cover that one more time? General compliance, there are three items. Extension, alteration, inclusionary housing, or local preference. So what's your question?
No, the statement, it's the statement, Mr. Chairman, right after general compliance. So there are actually four categories there. There's the statement after general compliance, and then the three subtexts items.
In 8.2.12, there are three items. Extension or alteration of pre-existing non-conforming use, inclusionary housing, and local preference.
Right. Do you see general compliance? Can you read the sentence right after general compliance?
My, it just has the two words.
So there's a paragraph?
Okay.
He doesn't approve of the paragraph?
I don't know which you're referring to.
Are you even getting to 1, 2, or 3?
This is the prefatory language. I just read it.
Okay. You're looking at the actual bylaw, not the worksheet, right?
A proposal must comply with all other applicable town bylaws and applicable rules, regulations, and requirements of all departments and boards and commissions. Right, so, and that hasn't been done yet, right?
Right.
Okay.
Correct. So I'd like to include that on the list.
Does somebody want to take a note on that? And make that number 3?
Yeah, that's all I would do. Just adding the, where it says general compliance, just use that as a item.
Use that as a.
Use that as an item, yep.
And designating the I.
I would call it a question on that.
Okay. Well, we have satisfied under 1 and 2, so.
Right.
So are you using general compliance as the category, and just leave that as a question?
Yes.
Or more information actually?
The prefatory language.
It's really more information is needed, because we haven't, you know, we haven't covered some of the things that we need to, and the Concom has not ruled. The Health Department hasn't ruled on a septic plan, et cetera. So you want to use the first, the first row as general compliance?
There are some issues that are drawn to that 10.5 bylaw section that need questions, and that's the reason I put a question instead of more information needed.
Now where are we?
Groundwater protection overlay district is section 10.5.
Well, you've moved on, so.
Excuse me, Emil, 10.5 is special permits. The GPOD is, I think that's.
That's 9.
9.
It's 9.1.
Can we follow this chart? As opposed to jumping around?
I prefer not to jump around, but I'm, what I'm saying is, it's a question. If you want to call it an I, then we can call it an I, but I would just put a question in there.
Under what category are we talking now?
8.2, 8.2.12.
Right.
General compliance, the statement right after the general compliance.
I got it.
Reference to groundwater, groundwater protection overlay district, which refers to some other section. We don't have to name it, 9.1.
Right, and we have.
We have not, there are questions in there.
Right.
That I have, anyway.
Well, if I remember correctly, the project is outside the groundwater protection overlay district, is I wrong?
The physical part of it, yes.
Okay, so, that's not relevant.
It is. The GPOD is within the property, and it's right at the bottom of the hill.
Not the project, though.
So you're calling a project the 16 acres?
Yeah.
Is that the, okay. Well, that changes a lot of things, then. I'm happy with that, if you want to call it that, but.
Yeah.
Because I, the open space is, then, is not in the property.
That's why we went through dividing, that's why we went through that whole process.
The 50 acres is not in this discussion?
The project, that's why we went through this whole process.
No, the process, the process.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You're the person that suggested that we divide the property into two sections.
No, I was not, but go ahead.
I believe you were, but I could be wrong. So it was made, and we discussed it, and the board agreed to divide the project into two separate lots, one that incorporated the 16 acres of development, and everything else outside that, so.
I think the farmland, I think it was approximately six acres, that was what was carved out of the original 66 acres, leaving 58 acres in one lot, and the remainder in Lot 2.
And what's in Lot 2?
The farmland area, but by removing that, it made the GPOD inapplicable.
As an overall site, as an overall site designation, yes, that's correct.
Yes, I, yeah, but the fact remains that there's a groundwater protection district within a, you know, within the confines of the property that the applicant is intending to purchase at some point.
Okay, that's fine, because the groundwater protection overlay district terms and requirements are so nonspecific to this project, that, that's fine. We can include it. All right, let's keep going.
I have another question on.
Are we following this?
Yes, I'm following down on section 8.2.22.
Section 8.2.
Setbacks and landscape buffers. I originally had thought that was house setbacks and landscaping around the house within the development, as opposed to setbacks and landscape buffers between the development and the rest of the property or the neighborhood. And so I'm not quite sure, I don't, I feel fairly satisfied with the internal landscaping of the houses and the driveways, and so on, but I have a grave many questions about the setbacks and buffering between the project and the houses on Chabaco, or the houses on Route 22. For example, the entire ledge hill, now that the foliage has dried back, you can see that there's several hundred stand of spuce trees all along that ledge ridge, and I, for one, would like to know how many of them are going to be kept, as opposed to how many of them are going to be chopped down for housing, because that would make a huge difference in how visible the project was. That would be, you know, how, what kind of buffer there was between the project and Route 22, or the, and likewise, in terms of the entrance off of Chabaco. I think the current plan that we have has totally inadequate setbacks and buffers through that entrance with respect to the rest of Chabaco Road, so.
May I interject, Bill?
I just, I don't know what we're talking about, you know, landscaping within the project as opposed to landscaping the project.
You refresh my recollection, because the other bylaw that I, in reviewing the minutes, I indicated to Patrick that I felt that there was a question, and it was about this section. So I don't believe that at the last meeting, there was any consensus that 8.2.22 was satisfied, so.
Good, well then, we need a question mark and an I there.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I.
That's, that's my recollection, that's what my particular notes reflect it.
Yeah.
And I don't know how.
That's the reason we're doing.
Okay.
Exactly, and I don't know how everyone else feels on that particular item.
I don't have my original notes with me, so, so your notes indicate that that's still a question.
Right.
Your original notes from the last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
May I just help with a clarification? Bill was questioning whether it was specifically about the perimeter of the property. If you read the bylaw, it specifically covers that. It is pertaining to the perimeter of the property in relationship to the neighborhood.
Well, then, we have a lot of, a lot of issues still about the perimeter of the prop, property. It's not S.
Right, that's what I take it as, is the perimeter, not the internal.
Okay, great.
Okay, so, we interrupted Emil. Did you have any other ones before 8.2.22?
The 8.2.13, general requirements. Number 1, I had a question mark. And number 2, I had a question mark. And number 7, I had a question mark. So that could stay an I.
I think we decided to put I's because we were.
We put I's all the way through there.
We got I's throughout that.
Yeah.
Where there are no NAs.
There's one S on number 3.
Right, there's one S for location of wastewater treatment, and 2, 2 non-applicables for 5 and 6.
Right, right.
And the rest are I's.
Yeah. Homeowners Association, you're not going to be able to do that until.
That's why it says, that's why it says I. Okay, keep going.
8.2.15, dimensional standards.
There's nothing there. We know that.
Dimensional standards, supersede all dimensional standards of the underlying zone.
That's, that's kind of like, it's just.
I put in satisfied in that. It was a change, but it wasn't indicated as, as satisfied in Patrick's, but it is in, it is satisfied, yes. So it's not a check.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's correct.
So we're, for 8.2.15 is S?
Is S, according to my record.
Borrow your pen.
I want to borrow it, too.
All right.
I hate to interrupt again, but just to back up on 8.2.12, general compliance. My recollection is, in the application, I saw that there was a local preference plan, so that may in fact be satisfied. I don't have any problem leaving it with, for more information, but I do remember seeing a local preference plan, and that would be a local preference for Hamilton residents, and it's.
What number are you at now?
8.2.12.
8.2.12.
Yes, general compliance, but it has local preference. I did, I did recall seeing that they had a plan for that.
Well, I think we'll probably revisit that whole section, so we can deal with that.
If I recall, there was mention that there would be local preference, but we didn't see anything formal, or any kind of, I don't know, I don't know how local preference works, actually.
They mentioned it, they, you know, the applicant did indicate that it would comply with that, but, yeah, I, I'd have to refresh my recollection on whether there was an actual plan, or just an indication that they, that it would have a plan in the future.
To refer to what Bill asked, how local preference works, my understanding is, people who live in the community would be given preference, or early preference, to be able to decide if they wanted to move into the project or development or not.
That's what local preference is.
If you, there needs to be a process. How long is local prefencing last? There's usually a window.
That's all, that's all, in the original document, final document.
Well, I'm just saying, we haven't seen the details about how local preference in this case will be carried out.
Yep, that's my recollection, too.
And that's something that we probably, we might want to see.
Got it.
So do you think that's best characterized by more information needed?
Yeah.
As I have it?
Which is what's there.
Which is what we've already added.
That's right.
So, that's kind of a subset of that question. So I think when we return back to that, there's going to be several, it's going to include GPOD, it's going to include the subjects, other subjects as well, so probably don't want to get too far into the weeds on these. All right, Emil, do you want to continue?
Here's a small difference. 8.2.16, building and design standards, makes reference in the statement after the title, character of the neighborhood in which it's located.
Wait a minute.
8.2.16.
Yeah, I'm looking at this, is this in 1 through 6, or?
No, it's the statement after design standards.
Hey, hold on. Consistent with residential.
In order to achieve, in order to achieve a development that reflects the residential character of the neighborhood.
It says here residential character of the town.
Number 2 says the town, but 1 says the neighborhood in the title, so as long as town and neighborhood are interchangeable, I'm okay with.
Where are you, where do you see neighborhood?
Right after the title, building and design standards.
Not on mine.
Within the bylaw.
It's there. It says, in order to achieve a development that reflects the residential character.
He's looking at the bylaw. Okay, okay, thank you.
The bylaw specifies. Neighborhood.
Of neighborhood, which is, in which it is located.
And then, point 2 talks about residential character of the town, which is different, but anyway, just.
So I mean, I would say that the neighborhood has not at all been satisfied.
Yeah, that's what I would.
Yeah, that's a question mark.
That's a question mark.
I'm not sure about the town. The town's got all sorts of characters.
Well, so, okay, whoa, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on.
Emphasize town.
I want to actually see if we can bifurcate this. The introductory sentence to 8.2.16 is an aspirational and subjective decision. So I'd like to use this, and so I'm not trying to eliminate it as for consideration or discussion, but I want to use this template that 1 through 6 has either been satisfied, not applicable, or we need more information. Because I think when we go through, and we can use this when we get to the end of the discussion, and say, okay, we can literally go through this and go through each section and say, okay, have, and I'm going to use 8.2.16 as an example, have 1 through 6 been satisfied? Have we got the information that we need? Does it comply with this? Then go back, so we sort of, we start eliminating areas where we have questions, where we need more information, and then we start talking about the project in its entirety, and we can use this and drill down into these kinds of questions, because this is a very subjective question, and you're asking board members now to come up with a decision. Or you want to have more discussion, that's good, but I don't want to hang it up until we have that larger discussion. Am I making any sense here? Yes, no?
What I would say is that the bylaw is internally inconsistent and ambiguous.
Yes, and that's exactly my point, is, and it's, and this is where it gets muddy. And what I'm trying to do here is, to the degree that we can get specificity on the individual questions that are before us in this checklist, you know, have, have, can we check off and say, you know, it's been satisfied or not? Then we're going to have to go back at some point, when we've got all the entirety of, and narrowed it down to, okay, so, in, and I'm using this as an example, in general, we've checked off all the issues, except the aspirational ones. You know, it starts off in the senior housing bylaw, you know, it has tenants of aspiration, and each section is aspirational, and some of these are inconsistent and contradictory. So how do we, we're going to have to decide how to resolve that.
So why can't we have, fill out the checklist as, as we've talked about with the 1 through 6?
Yeah.
But there's another column for the, if, in quotes, aspirational piece, there's another, there's another box for that, so leave the question mark or the I in that, and it, and it doesn't confuse the one, the binariness of 1 through 6.
I agree, I agree.
So in other words, I'm agreeing with you, but it doesn't change the fact that we'd like a question mark across from 8.2.16, building and design standards, as a general, as a general statement.
We'll need another row, then.
I'm sorry?
We'll need another row, then.
No, it's right there.
No, it's the prefatory language. It, it, it's, it's the prefatory language before the itemization.
Oh, okay, so you want to.
It's a box there.
So I just want to be clear, so you want to change the S to an I?
For that row.
Yes.
For that row?
Yes.
Got it.
I think that's great.
So.
Just like we changed it for 8.2.22, we changed that from an S to an I.
Got it.
Or a question mark, and, an I and a question mark.
Got it, okay. Go ahead.
I also think that, as we go forward in this more subjective question, with this subjective discussion, we should not think yes or no, but we should think, what changes would make the project a. would make the project a yes as opposed to a no.
And that's exactly, that's exactly where I think we should go. And that's what's exactly my tenet here is where we can get clarity and specificity, even though these things can be muddled and inconsistent. Let's get there. And then we get to the interpretive and subjective, then we have that discussion. And can we change any elements or suggest changes to any elements that would, um, that would satisfy, you know, where we can put an asset? I mean, that's, I think that's what this whole process is designed to do. An iterative process to get to us, get to a focal point where we've narrowed it down, we have a comfort level with the information we have, and we, the special permit is a discretionary permit, and we're going to have to exercise our discretion.
I support that process.
Yep. So if I'm sometimes trying to narrow this conversation down to these key elements, that's why I'm doing it. And so then we leave the, the question marks for future discussion. But go ahead. Let's keep going.
I've got a question now.
Go ahead.
If, if it's discretionary, does that mean that in one project, let's just take 8.2.16 for example, your design standards could go in one direction, but in another project, they could go in a completely opposite direction, but both, because it's discretionary, both are acceptable? Am I making that...
Sure, the context of the development might be very different. The scale, the environment, there, there are all sorts of situations where, where you would say one thing about one development and another thing about another development.
That's why it's a special permit. As opposed to, pardon my, you, you getting us into describing this as a site plan review, it's not discretionary. It's, you cannot not approve it. Site plan review was 59 Willow, 5963 Willow Street was a site plan review. The planning board reviewed it. They could make comments. They could make second suggestions. They could make recommendations, but they could not say no.
But in a special permit, you can say no?
Yes.
Okay.
So, okay.
What, what determines which way you go when you're doing a project? Way back at the beginning, what determines that?
Uh, this entire process determines that.
That is the will of the board. One of the important things that you often do as part of a, a project is ask the developer, and particularly their architect, what was your motivation or collection of motivations as to how you designed these structures? Did you use the neighborhood? Did you use the community? Did you use a single nearby project or was this off of the shelf? So it's important to have that conversation, and that's a conversation we haven't entertained yet with the developer. But it's setting specific and it's project specific.
Okay.
To your point.
Thank you. Okay. Amel, you've got the floor since you're driving this.
Thank you. Uh, number six looked like it was left blank. Um, and I had a question mark in that. This other applicable building and design standards in planning board rules and regulations. It was left blank, I think, Patrick.
Yeah, probably because we...
But now that we're changing the, the whole category, 8.2.16 to an I, that's sort of, you know, encompasses all the things below? I don't know.
No, I think the individual, as I understood it, the subcategories, the one, two, three, and so forth, uh, can be satisfied and off the table.
Yeah. And I, what I'd like to do is minimize changes if we can, just so we're not reopening, I'm going to use this Pandora's Box kind of thing. We want to, we want to keep shutting doors, airtight compartments if we can. All right, keep going.
Uh, let's see.
Can I ask a question now before we go further? So how does, do the NA's fit in with what you just said?
NA is not applicable. There are no questions. We don't satisfy. It's just not, it's, it's...
It's not a problem with that.
Yeah, it's not an issue.
My next, my next one is 8.2.21, parking, um, and it's item number three.
I, I have all blanks here.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, we haven't gotten into the site design.
So the whole thing is still open then?
At that granular level.
So on this whole category, we can put I's?
We could.
Yeah.
Or you could just, or you could just leave it blank.
If that were the case, we should have left lighting and, and...
All right.
Signs blanked, so probably I's would be good. We did talk about signs to some extent.
Consistency. I got it.
So...
Okay. We're going to need, like, we need, going to have an electronic airport board that, you know, changes us. Because this is going to, we're going to have dozens...
We're going to put it up on that wall back there?
We're going to have dozens of iterations of this. All right, keep going.
Okay, we just talked about 8.2.22. Uh, I'm okay with the rest of page two. Then going to, um, 8.2.25, Senior Housing Special Permit Application.
Wait, uh, hold on a second.
Yeah.
Back to 8.2.22. Is that an I?
No, it's an S.
I have an S. Is that...
That's what we were talking about.
That's what Bill was just...
That's what I was raising, that, that, in fact, if we think of this as landscaping and buffering the project from the neighborhood.
So you want I?
Uh, that, we definitely want an I there, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Keep going.
8.2.25. Um, there's one NA in that whole series. Uh, I would put a question mark, item number two. So 8.2.25.2, application of 8.1.12, OSFPD, special permit, design process.
Well, uh, well, hold on. So one is not applicable, two, you, you want to put an I there? Is that what you're...
I had a question mark, but it could be an I.
I think in our, our form, we should have had three categories here.
8.2.25.
Well, we had three at one point.
Yeah, so what, what's the question? I just, like, I want to dive in on this one.
This one, it says, I'll read it, item number two. "If an application contains an open space element, then requirements of Section 8.1, Open Space and Farmland Preservation Development, pre-application conference, conference, and OSFPD, special permit, design process shall apply."
Yeah, and I, I think this is, actually gets into, um, I, I want to hold on this.
Yeah.
Or we can dive into this, because this is on, comes into, I was going to talk about this afterwards, but we're almost to the end here. So if people will allow me, can we jump into this?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, this, uh, section 8.2.25, Senior Housing Special Permit Application Process, number two, refers to OSFPD, 8.1.12, Special Design Process. Now, I know Amel has been focusing on this, and I think this warrant, this is a further discussion of something we touched on the last time. So do people have their bylaws? Hate masks. I'm steaming up. All right. Um, do people have their bylaws?
I don't have a rule.
Yeah. All right. Well, um, item number one is Identification of Conservation Areas. So I'm going to pass this, um, I'll let you know, between Amel and Patrick, there's been a series of communications back and forth where Amel has, and correct me if I'm putting words in your mouth incorrectly, has been questioning the terminology conservation areas and whether, in fact, conservations are applicable to be considered as, in the senior housing bylaw, as referenced in the OSFPD section that we're now working at. Patrick, do you want to take that away?
Yeah, the, uh, the term conservation gets used in a lot of different connotations. Conservation restriction is something that's very near and dear to many property owners here in Hamilton.
Patrick, can I just interrupt?
Have designated...
You can save yourself some time. I'm not disputing the conservation areas, so it's not the issue here.
So...
Well, I think for the board's edification.
Sure.
This should be discussed.
Yeah.
So can, keep going.
Yeah, specifically, um, I think it's important to, you know, make members aware that a couple of years ago, actually in town meeting in 2018, the town eliminated what was known as the conservancy zone. That term, conservancy and conservation area, you'll find in the bylaw in a number of locations. It probably should be eliminated because it's connected to that former bylaw that was removed back in October of 2018. Um, you know, as you look through the senior housing bylaw, yet the, the most often when it uses the word conservation is in connection with the commission. Uh, it does talk about open space. It does talk about protecting, uh, you know, existing property and, you know, site features, but it also gives the flexibility of, you know, the design process to allow, you know, some level of discretionary, or what's known as designer's discretionary efforts to be able to make site plans and site designs on properties work in a way that fits the criteria that they're trying to provide to the public and within the project that they're undertaking. So I think focusing on conservation and the use of the term in a way that, you know, leaves individual site constraints on a developer is very limiting to them, very limiting to the board.
Right. So this was sort of the context of this back and forth emails between Amel and, and Patrick, is the terminology conservation areas. And conservation areas was actually a term of art, I think, created in the 60s in the town of Hamilton. It actually was probably in...
Conservation areas.
The forefront of trying to conserve natural resources, wetlands, et cetera. And it actually was done probably 50 to 60 years ago by somebody walking the perimeters of all the areas in town and then on a map, designating them conservation areas.
Amazingly enough, not to interrupt, but it was, it was prior to the Clean Water Act. It was prior to the Wetlands Protection Act that was created here in the state to protect wetlands in Massachusetts communities, which is amazing and very forward-thinking. Unfortunately, it was a bylaw that was created that was wholly unenforceable and undeterminable because it was so amorphously imposed on a town map.
It was really aspirational, if I remember. Wasn't it? That, that there were areas designated where the town should try and conserve the land, not that there was any, you know, process for it?
I think actually, as a matter of process with the OSFPD specifically, so senior housing says, "Application with open space subject to 8.1.7," which is a pre-application process. That's a line we haven't read yet. 8.1.12 is a line that we just talked about, the conservancy. 8.1.12.1 talks about a list of things that could be perceived as conservative or conservable, whatever the term is. I'm not going to speak properly. Um, and then the last line of it says as, you know, to the extent feasible, right? Looking at the 8.1.7 pre-application process, it essentially says, "Gather up a group of boards to decide as a group what we determine to be conservative, or to be necessary to conserve, and then apply that..."
In essence, that's, in essence, that's the case, and that's why it was withdrawn, because it's so discretionary.
Right.
Subjective. Uh, and the new Wetlands Protection Act is very objective, requires delineation, meeting specific requirements. So this conversation was important to have because, um, uh, it has been referenced by Amel. I'm sure it'll be referenced by other people. So the history here is important to understand why we're having this conversation and why the first time Amel brought it up, and I said, "Well, it's not a defined term anymore because, or definable term, because it's been eliminated from the lexicon in our bylaws."
So I would like to shed some, uh, different light on that, if I may. So what I think is interesting is if you study up a bit on stormwater management, um, bylaws, the state stormwater management bylaws, uh, what I think you'll find is that it may very well be true that you removed a conservancy district overlay or whatever, whatever it was that you removed. But I do not believe that this terminology is, is referring to that, because if you look throughout the Stormwater Management Manual and the sedimentation manuals that the, the DEP publishes, you will find this almost identical wording, including the term conservation areas and the steps in the process. And when we get to stormwater management review, we'll be able to look at those things, we'll be able to read those bylaws, and they're very detailed, they're very specific, they're very repetitive, they're very consistent, and they absolutely parallel the wording that's in your local bylaw. Absolutely. Same words, same order, same priorities. So I have a very, very different, um, take on this.
And I might just add to that. I mean, the repeal of one bylaw doesn't have the effect of repealing Section 8.1.12.
No, but I think it's important that the board have this discussion to understand some of the history that occurred. Um, and so, um...
Well, I certainly understand that, but if you look at Section 8.2.25.2, it says the special permit, design process shall apply. Not may apply, not, boy, it's a pain in the neck to have to do that. It says it shall apply, period.
I got it. No, I don't think anybody's saying that certain wording here doesn't apply. I just want to make sure that the board has an understanding of, that it's a, it's a term that has, um, been used in various parts of the bylaw. And so we have to be very careful about the term, how it's used, and interpreting its use.
To make sure that it's consistent, one from the other.
Well, it won't be consistent. That's the problem. As Marnie said, the bylaws conflict and many times are, um, uh, not in sync, to say the best. So I think this is fine to consider these. And again, um, again, these are going to be, um, some of these are going to be, um, open to interpretation.
If I could just clarify one thing on this.
So we have to, we have to figure out, we're trying to read some tea leaves in, in this process. So I just want people to, there are no absolutes in any of these bylaw sections. It's, it's open to interpretation. So go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think there might be some misunderstanding because the title of this section is conservancy or conservant, conservation areas. There are really two components. There's the regulated, and then there's the unprotected. The primary are the regulated. Those are wetlands, floodplains, and so forth. The unregulated are those natural features of significance like steep slopes, which come into play with, as Jonathan was saying, stormwater and erosion control and so forth. Some historic or cultural things like stone walls. It could be natural features that are significant in the town or something like that. So, those, all I'm trying to do is, I'm not trying to put a conservation label on everything, regulate everything. I'm just acknowledging what the, what the code does say. There are two components.
Oh, yeah, I get that.
Two components to it. No, I just don't want everybody to think I'm trying to put a label on everything. So, I'm happy with that. All I want to do is just mention that there are those two parts and that actually the wording here is directly from the model subdivision code that Massachusetts has. I looked it up, and the wording is exactly the same. It uses conservation areas, and I don't think there was any conservation
Yeah.
District or
And if you think about it.
Mine there, so I don't think that's relevant to this.
And in fact, if you think about it, I believe the applicant has actually complied with this. You know, they've identified all of these things.
I disagree. And again, the, all of the stormwater management bylaws reiterate this. They follow these steps, which is step one, you identify, and sometimes they call it other things, but mostly they call it conservation, conserves or areas. And it's not just a contour plan. Contour plan is one item. Then after that, they ask you to, within that contour plan, delineate these other elements. And that means you've got to label them, circle them, color them, do something to show them up. And that has not been done unless we've, it's been done and we haven't seen it.
So, what are, what hasn't been done?
We have a contour plan. We have existing contours. We have proposed contours. What we don't have, for example, is we don't have a map showing where the steep slopes are. And it would also be very useful to define steep slopes, and the stormwater management bylaws also help us define that.
Doesn't a contour map identify steep slope?
That's different from, that's different from the requirements. The requirements say submit a contour plan. That's, that's a contour that shows all the contours on the property. The delineation of the steep slopes is separate those from the other contours. Show where they are and where they aren't. That's
Contours are a general term. Steep slopes are a specific type of contour configuration. So, steep slopes are anything above 25%. So, you could have contours that show, am I right, Patrick? That show a grade of 20% or 10% or 5%. Those, you're still going to see contours, and that's what they've done. They've given us contoured. What we were trying to do is just discern within all of those contours, we're the ones that are considered as special features, and that's what
Oof, well, okay.
That's not that complicated either.
To my knowledge, we haven't had a presentation on the stormwater management information or plan yet, nor has the board discussed it in any way yet. So, how is it that we're arriving at conclusions or other
No conclusions here. What has been asserted
Having not arrived
No conclusions. There's, what has been asserted
Experienced in any way, any of that information.
What has been asserted previously, which I think is of the concern of the board here, at least with a few folks, is that it's been said that this section of the bylaw is satisfied, that they, that they delineated these conserva, areas of concern or conservation areas. And unless there's some information that we haven't received yet, that this has not been done, and it's actually the first step. It's the first step in, you know, what Emile was referencing, it's the first step in the stormwater management plan. It's actually the first step in a design process. It's the first step in the review of any design process. It's, it's, it's literally, in terms of industry standard, it's where you start. It's where you start the discussion, it's where you start the review, and we haven't, we've skipped that step.
So, is this purely a labeling exercise?
In a sense, yes. It's, it's, you can color code it, you can circle it, you can shade it, you can hatch it, you can do, there's many, many different ways. But what you're doing is you're separating the, the areas that are not considered conservation areas from the areas that are considered conservation areas. And again, it has nothing to do with things that are protected by the Wetlands Protection Act, like, you know, wetlands, resources, nor buffer zones. It has nothing to do with those elements.
So, I'm confused. What did this have to do with contour lines or with contours? Where did that come? You were talking about that, and now you're talking about conservation.
We have received detailed contour plans from the applicant, so that
Contour plans have to do with the differences in height of the terrain, in my understanding, so that if you have a very steep contour, the contour lines, let's say they're every 10 feet in change of altitude, they're going to be very close.
That's correct. And what you do is you
If they're, if they're not, if it's not very steep, they're going to be very far apart.
Correct.
To show a gradual line.
Correct.
I'm not quite sure why you need to differentiate and point out which ones they are. It's obvious which ones they are.
It's obvious if you sit there and analyze it and color it and shade it in.
Let him finish.
But again, this is, this is industry, it's worldwide industry standard, not just nationwide. It's worldwide industry standard. It's a standard in doing any kind of a design review for a, for, you know, what Emile was mentioning. It's, it's the standard, and it's mentioned multiple times in the stormwater management bylaws. So, it's just, it's just professional standard, and it's requested in your bylaws, in your local bylaws, it's also requested in many other forms.
So, so it's a labeling. What you're really advocating is for a labeling.
Yes. In fact, I believe that Emile has submitted, we've talked about this, Emile has submitted something to the, to the board, and it's just a matter of
We're not going to get into that tonight because then we're getting into the actual discussion.
That's fine. That's fine. But that's the step that's been missing.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get to the essence of the point that, you know, when we determine that we want a conservation areas, what it is that we're asking for, so that we have specificity.
It's very specific, yes.
Oh, I get it.
Yes.
Is there anything else in that section that we're looking for? Because I don't, and this is what I want to avoid for both the planning board and for the applicant, is that we, and I'm not saying we're doing it, but I want to avoid it, is that we're regulating with a pencil and eraser, that we went, you know, we sort of covered this, and then we go, "Well, that's not exactly what we mean. We need to get more information."
This is extremely specific, and it's just extremely, it's got very specific metrics. It's not, it's not aspirational, it's not judgmental, it's not
I get that. I get that. I'm asking for specific, are there other specific things that we would like to have delineated on a site plan so that we can specifically instruct the applicant what it is that we're looking for to satisfy your and anybody else's question?
Yeah, I have another. Jonathan requested and got a very detailed landscape plan, and the landscape plan shows where all of the new plantings are going to go, right around the houses. These are all going to be little 10-foot trees or 5-foot shrubs. And if you look at the site now, there's just hundreds of huge spruce trees, you know, all along, stretched out behind the wetlands. And I can't tell from this plan, it, it could be that all of those are going to be cut down. Every single one, in the process of blasting. And that what's going to happen is there's going to be a landscaping, new landscaping plan with lots of little 6-foot trees or 10, 10-foot trees in place of this forest. And I can't tell from the landscape plan whether any of these old trees, you know, any of this huge forest is being preserved or it's all going to be cut down and replanted.
Well, the
And I would really like to know that because that's a
Bill, to your point.
Okay. I'm just saying that's, I don't know where, that's something I need to see.
Bill, to your point, section 8.1.12.1 sets forth exactly what should be
The list.
In, in this plan. It includes, and this is the unprotected natural landscape where the 50-plus units are proposed. It says unprotected natural landscape fixtures such as steep slopes, mature woodlands, your point, prime farmland meadows, wildlife habitats, and wildlife corridors or connections thereto, cultural features such as historic and archaeological sites, and scenic views, and recreational features such as trails.
It doesn't stop there either. By the end of the statement, it suggests that included in the list is anything determined in 8.1.7, which is the pre-conference of several boards that have collected to determine what else they would like to be considered conserved.
Could you repeat that again? Because I'm not
8.1.7 is a pre-conference, and the definition of that pre-conference
Hold on. 1.7?
1.7.
Go ahead.
Shall request and attend a pre-application review of regular business meeting of the planning board. Planning board shall invite the board of health, building commissioner, conservation commission, open space committee, department of public works, fire chief, police chief, historic district commissions, office on disability, and zoning board of appeals to attend. The primary purpose of the pre-application conference is to identify the site's natural or historically important features, riding or walking trails on the site, abiding parcels, public safety, traffic, or infrastructure issues in areas the town prefers to see preserved as open space or for agricultural or equestrian uses. There's a secondary purpose, but I think it's well summed up in the first, which is that the boards gather to determine what else they might like to include in the list. So, 8.112 has a clear-cut list, 8.17 has a more ethereal board opinionated list or determined.
Yeah, well, that's the, that's the whole issue is, these are, they're never black and white and, and specific, and each section, if you're a lawyer, you could argue conflict with the other, you know, and somebody could say, "Well, I, I complied with your request. I did it in 8.1.7." And then the next individual could say, "Well, you did, but you really need to do much better detail," you know, "in 8.1.2." So, I, so, yes, there is a conflict there, and I could argue and say, you know, you're absolutely right. And, but I, but I don't think we're going to resolve this until, and I think we've got a definition from Jonathan, what he's looking for. Steep slopes, right?
No, it's the list. So, it's, it'd be steep slopes, it'd be, answer Bill's question, which I know the answer to, but it would be good for them to show it. I mean, I can infer it because I can read through all of their information, but it doesn't actually say that anywhere.
So, my, my question though is, if you apply standards that are not within our bylaws, that could be considered onerous to the point where it indicates there's a predisposition to not approve this, I just want to make sure we're not going down that path.
This is a process, and it's, the process is very clear, and it doesn't say it precludes development. It just says that you, you evaluate the process based on these steps. And again, that's what the stormwater management does, and it does it really, really clearly. It doesn't say you can't do things. It just, it just says that you follow this process, and it's very, it's very specific.
Got it.
And it doesn't shut the project down. It just, and, and the other interesting thing in the stormwater management, just let me finish here, is it's very clear about the priority of those steps. And we'll get to that when we get to stormwater management. It's, it's super clear, and it, and it's so clear that it, it actually gets sort of repetitive. It's so consistent. But we'll get to that when we get to stormwater management. But doesn't, it doesn't preclude a project.
Okay.
It just sets standards.
Just, I just wanted, I just wanted to have that discussion.
Absolutely.
What I would say, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yep, and I can, I just want to get that on the table because I, that could be construed that way, so I want to make sure that the board has that discussion and, and understands. We, we have to be careful, we're not sending that message. I understand where you're coming from. You want specificity, you want to follow international practice.
I want to, I want to follow the local bylaws as they apply, which then tie to the state bylaws as they apply. That's all I want to follow.
Go ahead.
And I would add to that. This process should be viewed as a collaborative process to make this a better project. And I think that the members of the planning board probably, you know, have identified areas that concern them, and so this process will enable a, a good discussion of where problems may lie and how those problems can be resolved. And it's, it would be helpful if, if an adversarial approach wasn't taken because some of the suggestions that may come from this process may lead to a development that perhaps addresses more of the purposes that are set forth in section 8.2.1 of our bylaw and may enable us to actually make the findings that we have to make, including the finding that, that the applicant must demonstrate compliance with the intent of section 8.1, open space and farmland preservation development special permit design process. So, I, I think that this, this is a process to make the project better, and, and it shouldn't be viewed as we're, we're, we don't like this development, it's not going to be approved, period. I don't think that's the intent of anyone here, particularly because there's so many outstanding topics that we have yet to address. So, I, speaking for myself, until the final hearing, I, I intend to keep as open a mind as possible, and, and after all the evidence is submitted, then evaluate it and make a decision. But I, I don't think that, that, I think this process could potentially lead to improvements that the applicant might appreciate.
I think, just to tag on that, 8.112 is a specific list, the pre-conference. 8.17 is, like we said, an ethereal list, and 112 specifically states, "To the maximum extent feasible, we should include the pre-conference topics, which are the more opinion-based."
Yes.
It's not to suggest that anything we come up with is to be upheld, you know, yea or nay.
Right, and I take your, his point is well made, is this should be not only cooperative internally, it should be cooperative externally with the applicant.
I'd like to add something to that, which I think dovetails beautifully and elegantly with this. The, again, the stormwater bylaws, which are really well-written when you dig into them, they
Bylaws, please.
The stormwater management bylaws, the state bylaws, they have a section that actually says, "In the design process, they encourage," not, you may do it, "but they encourage collaboration for a mutually beneficial end result."
Right.
And that's a quote. And that is, that is my personal mission in a process like this. But if information is sidelined or debated, and we can't get things on the table, we can't get out of the gate.
Got it, and that's why we're having this meeting.
Exactly. Thank you.
So, let's, let's circle back to where we started, to the list, and see if we can conclude this, because I, we're not going to get resolution tonight. You're looking for delineation of steep slopes.
I'm looking for the list that's outlined in 8.1.12.
Which is delineation of steep slopes.
And mature woodlands, prime farmlands, meadows. I'm looking for the list, so.
I've got it right here in front of me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm just, again, I'm trying to get specificity so that a message coming out of here is Yeah, just again, I'm trying to get specificity so that a message coming out of here is clear and concise, and the applicant can actually respond.
For me personally, it would be steep slopes and mature woodlands. I understand that all the mature woodlands are going away, but it's very helpful for other board members to see that.
Yeah, that's fine. For me, I thought it was obvious when we looked at the plan.
Yeah, it's obvious.
You know, it's like, "They're going away."
Yes, yes, I agree, but if there are questions, that means it's not clear, and the first step is to make it clear to board members so they can make thoughtful decisions and ask thoughtful questions.
No, I hear you. Probably, having been through this for too many years, it just, you know, I look at a map and I go, "I can see what's happening," and it's like, "Okay, that answers my question, but the board has more detailed questions." Got it. So really, steep slopes is the key issue?
Yes, and what I would say is it's useful to-- I'd like to just pause for a minute and talk about steep slopes because it can be confusing. So nationally, you know, when you look at the government standards, when you look at other states, the steep slopes are defined anywhere between 15% and 25%. And different locales pick a number between those two. I chose, I submitted something to Patrick, which I'd love to share, and it's nothing about this project, which is a little reference sheet about slopes. It's just sort of a useful, handy reference for this project or any project, and I would love to have permission to share that. So basically, MassDEP defines steep slopes at 18%. So I don't really care whether you pick 15%, 18%, or 25%, but it's not an arbitrary measure. And so I would love to be able to share that reference sheet because it's just handy for all projects.
Can we wait until we get actually to talk about where that's relevant as opposed to doing that now?
Sure.
Because I do want to get through this checklist.
Absolutely.
Because we're making great progress. We're having a good discussion. I just don't want to go down that rabbit hole.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, you okay?
Sorry to the audience.
So we're at 8.2.26?
No, I think we were at 8.2.25. I wanted to confirm that on number two, that's a question mark.
That's what I would put there, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'm fine with the rest of it.
Okay.
I had more information needed on expansion because I think that that would have to be in the condo documents.
Where?
That's 8.2.32. So it shouldn't be satisfied. It should be an "I."
What's expansion mean?
Yeah, what does it mean?
I thought the project self-satisfies.
It says, "Once it's permitted under this section, further expansion shall not be permitted, and no subdivision of the property or change in property lines shall be allowed."
Well, that happens when--
A notation to this effect shall be written on the plan. Actually, it's not the condo documents. It just can't be satisfied until the inclusion of--
It's a condition of approval.
Yeah, it's not satisfied. It's just--
Yeah, it-- expansion wouldn't be a possibility unless a special permit project were to come back to the board to be modified to allow that. So that's why I answered that as satisfied.
Yeah, I think it is because it's a condition of the permit. You can't--
Right.
You can't-- if a permit is granted, you can't do anything--
All right. It wasn't-- this is an Omega Bre kind of--
Yeah, yeah, and again, I'm trying to eliminate--
Okay.
The process is, is that if a property owner were to attempt to create a new structure on a special permit-permitted property, the building commissioner goes to that permit, evaluates that permit to determine if there was any open area or ability for additional building to take place. If a project has been completed, it doesn't have expendability, again, unless it comes back to the board with the board approving that to take place.
Wasn't there a situation way back, maybe five or eight years ago, where that kind of question came up and turned out the permit was violated or something in the building process?
No, not--
I remember that, but I remember it's as tedious as this, when Canterbury Brook wanted to come back for generators on individual properties--
We had--
Because they were not included in that special permit, they had to come back to this board for approval.
Yeah, and we had that discussion and ultimately approved it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's keep going. So we got to expansion, annual reporting. We need more information. Now we're on to 8.2.1, purpose. These are purposes we left blank because this is a end-of-permit-hearing-process discussion, right?
Right, this is who we're going to decide on.
Yeah, so then we move on to OSFPD. We certainly, I think we made that-- I think the pre-application conference, we can say, is satisfied because we did have two of those. Is that agreeable?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Then 8.1.2 is, again, we talked in great detail about that, and I-- did we mark those as question marks? Let's go back and look. Yes, it's a question mark. So that whole section is a question mark, right?
Right, right.
Although, let's give this a little more consideration here. The question mark is the identification of conservation areas. They did delineate the proposed development area. That's not in question, is it?
There's nothing in question. The development we have, I think, the plan we have, all of these--
So can we mark that satisfied?
Well, the delineation of the-- Okay, so--
You're not losing your place.
What's that?
If you're worried you're not losing your place that we just--
No, I just want to make sure that you understand what that is. It's not just drawing a line around it. So can I read it really quick?
Oh, what are we reading?
I'm going to read that by law.
Go ahead. You mean 8.1.12? 8.1.12?
Yes.
Identification and delineation of the proposed development area. The second step in the design process is to define and delineate the area that will contain buildings, roadways, and other site improvements and amenities for residents of the development. "To the maximum extent feasible, the proposed development area shall consist of land outside the identified conservation areas." That's the second step. Now, the board might determine that none of those conservation areas need to be preserved, but it's a step that the board needs to take and determine.
Right.
Is that clear? So step one is you identify the unprotected conservation areas. Then step two is you delineate the area.
I get where you're going. We've already decided in the previous section under-- that we discussed at length that the definitive subdivision plan-- I'm sorry. Wait a minute, got to back up. 8.2.25, number two, application with open space subsection, 8.17, pre-application, and 8.12, special permit design process. We want to see more information. So I think that's covered. Again, we're kind of getting splitting hairs here. We've already got-- I think we've already got what you were asking for in that previous section, so--
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think, as I understood it, the whole thing was a question mark except we could take out lotting because there is no such thing as lotting in this--
Correct. Everything else is a question. So 8.1.--
8.1.12, 1 through 4 are still open items. 5 is done.
Okay, S for 5.
Does that help?
Roads and trails have been identified. Correct?
Well, they've been identified, but you can't finish this process until you start the process, so, you know, I don't mean to be glib here, but the--
Okay.
It's a step-by-step process. You start with the conservation areas, then you start laying out the site, and so none of this is satisfied until you take step one.
Okay, so you want more information needed?
On everything except 5.
Location of dwelling units is already on the plan.
No, that's not the process.
But they're on the plan.
Yes, but--
Shall I read it?
I don't think you need to read it. I don't know why we're-- I understand the process. I think we've all agreed to the process that you've outlined. So are you telling me that they're going to change the location of their dwelling units?
I would love to see that.
It would-- that could be up to the board to decide. It's not up to me to decide. It's up to the board to decide after you've done steps 1, 2, and 3.
Okay, I got it. All right.
You know, maybe it's-- maybe no, there's no changes. Maybe there's a tiny change.
They made a presentation, but I'm not sure that we have--
You beat me--
--reviewed or approved it, or, you know, we haven't-- we need to discuss it.
Okay, so a question?
Are these all questions or more information or both?
I think it's more information.
Well, more information and questions, actually.
It's really questions. It's really questions. They made a proposal. The buildings are very clear. We might wish to make a counterproposal. So that's a discussion. It's not a--
If I may, what is kind of-- We can go through this process, but there's enough information in the application to go through this process, and that's what Emil attempted to do with his map. And so we don't need to wait for the applicant to do this. In fact, we could save them money if we just gave them Emil's plan and say, "Is this accurate?" If they said it's accurate, it's done. They don't have to pay their consultants to do it.
So here's my question. What would make you think their plan isn't accurate?
They haven't done the plan.
They haven't done it. Their plan is, their contours are accurate because that was used to compile where the steep slopes exist on the hill. That's the source of the information, but it was not clear in what they had presented with just contour lines.
What you-- the process is you go around and you measure the distance between the contour lines and you mark where it is defined as a steep slope.
Now, we're back to steep slopes again. I get that. You know, I'm getting frustrated with--
I'm just trying to save the applicant time and money and speed the process along. You don't have to do it. Let them do it.
I'm getting frustrated, and I'm sure the applicant is as well, is that you've made the point about the steep slopes and that they need to define those and the development area and where the trees are going to be removed. They've provided the dwelling units. We've got a question mark with that. The identification and delineation of the proposed, we've got a question mark there. They have identified the roads and trails. So I guess that's a question mark, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get through this section to identify where the questions are and where more information is needed so that when we engage with the applicant, we can be specific about exactly what it is that we're looking for from them. Because on the first blush, they're going to say, "Gee, we provided you a very detailed map, and I just want to be able to get back to them and say, 'Okay, you did, but we want more clarity on X, Y, and Z.'"
Yeah, as they're stated in the bylaws, right? Because what's going to happen is it's the job of this planning board is to evaluate what is on the table, what has been presented. And what we're saying is that in order to evaluate it, and we need to start with, at the beginning, and follow this process through, which will lead to where the problematic areas might be, whether it relates to stormwater management, whether erosion control, site plan design, or any of those things. Starting here is the only way you're going to get there, to find out whether or not the project, you know, meets the standard of the bylaws. It's the only way to do it.
Understood, and it's also the role of this planning board to communicate clearly and concisely to the applicant what specific pieces of information the board needs to come to a conclusion that the question--
I need to see where the forest is. There's none of the-- None of the plans have, they have little lines saying, "Boundary of wetlands." They don't tell me where the forest is, the huge forest, and how much of it is coming down to be replaced with little 10-foot shrubs. I can't, I can't, I don't have a sense of that. I have a fear that the entire forest is coming down. You know, that's mature woodlands, as Jonathan says, but I can't be sure of that. And that has a great bearing on, in my view, because to fit into this neighborhood, this development has to be as invisible as possible.
Right.
And if you tear down that forest, it's not going to be invisible. It's going to be a shiny city on top of a hill that everybody can see for blocks around. And the same thing is true on Chabaco Road. If they move two or three houses into the development, or maybe they just scrap two or three houses, they can effectively make the development somewhat invisible for the residents on Chabaco Road, but they haven't shown any inclination to do that. You know, it looks to me to be possible, but--
Understood, understood.
I need to see some alternatives.
So I'm going to hold fast to my previous statement, and I don't know how we're going to record this. It is the duty of this board to clearly communicate what specific questions need to be answered. Bill, you've talked about the trees. I get that.
We've talked about the entrance.
But we've talked about that. We made that very clear probably three or four meetings ago. So I'm trying to go through this list and be specific so at the end of this meeting, the applicant can say, "Okay, the areas the board has been very clear about going through this checklist and identifying what it wants to see included in its future presentations." So that's all I'm trying to-- I'm not trying to exclude anything. I'm just trying to get clarity and specificity for us and for the applicant and for the public so they know what to expect that's going--
In my mind, it couldn't be more simple. I think the applicant simply needs to comply with Section 8.1.12.1. And it's as clear as a bell. It says, "Unprotected natural landscape features such as steep slopes, mature woodlands, prime farmland." I think we've had that identified. Elsewhere, meadows. I've not seen nothing about wildlife habitats and wildlife corridors. I don't know if there are any, and cultural features, if there are any. We did see some stone walls on our sidewalks. Whether they have any historical significance, I don't know.
Right, I get that.
So I think it's just compliance with this section.
Okay.
And that way, there's no arbitrary addition or subtraction of any items.
All right, so for the purposes of this discussion, then, I think that the consensus I'm hearing, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, is you want to see the special permit design process in more specificity.
Yeah, I think that's right, and the only question is defining the actual pitch on steep slopes. Jonathan was right in that-- Jonathan was right in that, you know, I...
Please, don't tell me that again. That is so goddamn clear. Even a stone wall would now know that. So, please, we get that. The applicant, if they're listening, everybody knows that you guys have done an excellent job of making that just crystal clear.
No, the only reason I'm bringing it up, Mr. Chairman, is that are they going to say, what do you want? 15%, 25%, 50%? What do you want?
You want, from what I'm hearing, is you just want them to identify what the steep slopes are.
No, you have to give them, you have to give them a number. So, my number would be 25%. Jonathan?
Mass DEP says 18%. I'm happy with either. We just need to pick it and be, to your point, we need to be specific. We need to be specific.
These are steep slopes...
Your point.
Thank you.
On the land as it exists.
Yes.
Existing conditions.
As opposed to what it's going to look like?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Because it's not going to be steep when they're finished.
Right.
They are.
Yeah. Anyway, so...
They're going to be really steep when they're finished.
I'm happy for the board to reach consensus is at 18 or 25% just so that the applicant is not confused, to your point. Let's just, and that's why Emil brought it up, is pick a number. 18 or 25.
No, I'm confused.
Mass DEP says 18.
You want them to define what they're going to have for a slope after the construction is done. Is that correct?
No.
You want to know what the slope is now?
Yep, right now.
You look at a map. It'll tell you.
So, you want a before and after?
Right.
Okay.
That's what I just asked.
They've already given us the after, so...
So...
We have this contour for after?
Yeah.
So, the question is, we need to pick a number of what constitutes a steep slope.
Yes, and the board needs to say that. Is it Mass DEP's number, or is it sort of the high-end-of-industry standard, which is 25%? And that's why Emil brought it up, he's trying to be helpful.
I think if we're referencing Mass, you said stormwater management guidelines and the information that you suggested, I would think that the Mass DEP number would be appropriate.
Would be a good way to choose it.
Which is 18%.
What's nice is also between 15 and 25. It's sort of in the middle.
Right.
So, it's a nice, sort of, split-the-difference number.
All right. Is that agreeable to the board? All right. So, boy, that took a long time to get to. But that's part of the process. That's why we're doing this. Okay. All right, stormwater management. We haven't gotten to that yet, right?
No.
So, we can't fill that in. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's it?
That's the end.
All right. So, we've had fun with that.
Let's do the notes.
Uh, let's see, is there, wait a minute, see if there's anything else.
Conservation of...
You're going to ask now?
Yeah.
You were asking.
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, last meeting, I was asked to create themes for discussion, which I submitted to Patrick.
And we're setting that aside as well as Emil's map.
Okay.
So, we don't get into project-specific questions.
Got it, thanks.
So...
Into Patrick that didn't go out.
Okay.
Did you want to talk about the format? Because the format, would you like to talk about?
No.
No, in other words, do we want to adopt? The question is, do you want to adopt this as themes for discussion for next time or some other time? Or is this, is this an inappropriate set of themes for discussion? That's all I'm asking.
I prefer we do that at our next meeting.
Sure.
Because we've gone through, I just think we've covered a lot of territory here, and...
Jonathan, have you actually written out your themes for discussion?
Yes, I submitted it to Patrick last week.
Right.
And I think it would be helpful if they were distributed to board members so that we had an opportunity to look at them and actually formulate our responses to them and how they fit within this checklist.
Yes, and that's why I'd suggested that we maybe even talk about them. But if we don't want to talk, I don't mean to talk about the themes, but ask whether the list, ask the board whether the list fits their, you know, is it clear? Is it understandable? And any comments on it, that's all. We don't have to do that.
Yeah, I think, I'd like Marnie's suggestion. I think it needs to be circulated along with Emil's.
I really want to discuss the themes, but I think, you know, we'd like to, if we have them, maybe they're simple enough that we can discuss them.
I'm confused. I'm suggesting that people look at it, but if, but if we're not...
Oh, now I need one. HP, what's this HP? What's this HP?
Senior Housing Bylaws.
Do you have one of these guys? Thank you.
So, I have to go back to bylaw.
So, Jonathan, am I correct that your themes are in part predicated upon receipt of the compliance with 8.1.12?
That would be handy, yes.
Because once we have that, then the themes actually get...
They make more sense.
They make more sense. And actually, we can make suggestions as to...
Or you can have an internal conversation about where you feel it's in alignment and where you feel there's things that need to be discussed further.
Right.
Or need more information.
Right, because, for example, the first theme, layout in relation to the natural environment, it would be helpful to have the new delineation of the steep slopes and that type of thing. Makes a huge difference if we have that in front of us when we look at, when we discuss that theme.
So, you're proposing, you have here, Section 8.2.1, review senior housing bylaw purposes.
Yeah, just as a compass, not as a decision. In other words, it sets the tone for what you're looking at. You're not voting on it, you're not deciding on anything. It's just setting the tone, so for what you're looking at, because that's where we're aiming. That's our goal at the end. And what's important is to read the last sentences there. "The path is not to vote, but rather the goal and purpose is to have an internal board dialogue to gain an understanding of how the general themes under the applicable bylaws inform and focus the remaining technical and peer review of the application. This enhances the possibility of having a more productive and collaborative dialogue with the applicant at future meetings." That's the mission.
Sorry, Rick.
Go ahead.
I was just going to, there was one theme, I think initially I'd raised about the establishment of the site and maybe how the developer intends to go about establishing the, you know, the construction logistics portion of the job. How much material is taken? Are they staging it on-site? Are there temporary roads that have to be established for the period of excavation? Where are the site trailers are going to be located? How are they going to manage the site during the duration of the construction?
Yeah, that's a good discussion later, but the first step is to figure out the... I loved Patrick's comment earlier when he said, "Let's find out what the design impulse was behind this." I'm not using his correct words, but basically find out what drove this design? How do you feel like it fits in this context? And what's the logic behind it? And that dovetails exquisitely with what we just talked about in 8.1.12.
I think that's a great way to divide it up, to think about when it's done, what's it going to be? What's its impact? You know, how do we like it? And then there's the second question, can you actually get there from here? Or what are the costs of getting there from here? Is there some obstacle or whatever?
And that's where the peer review comes in handy, and now it's informed by a bigger picture.
One of the recommendations that I'll make to the board to request of the applicant is that they provide for us what's known as a construction management plan. It tells us where the truck traffic's coming from, going to, where worker parking is taking place, what will happen to the public roadways that they're using, maintenance thereof, noise, hours, all of the kinds of things that, you know, are germane to what your items were that you brought up. Pat, I think that's, you know, one of the important things that often gets left off. But I think particularly when you have such a sensitive environment as this property happens to be, that's one of the things that helps you better manage it.
And just a footnote on that, because this is a phased project, half of this project will be done initially, and then at some point in the future, second half, as I understand it. So, that brings in another complexity, I think, in the full construction process.
And in terms of information needed, that is something that hasn't been brought up and would be great to give the applicant a heads-up sooner rather than later, is a little more definitive description about what is and isn't being done for phase one.
The different phases.
Yes. So, what's the transition there?
I can't imagine blasting half the site, building it, and then blasting the other half of the site 20 feet from houses. He's going to have to blast the whole site to begin with.
That's specific in the proposal.
But that's a part of the proposal.
Of course they are.
But some more information would be great on that, and that'd be a lovely conversation for maybe another meeting.
So, I'm just a little confused here, because on bullet number three, you referencing 8.2.31, Planning Board findings. We're not anywhere near that, so...
Understood, but it's, again, it's what we're aiming at. We're aiming at successful findings there. And there's criteria in those findings. And if we don't know what the target is, then how do we aim at it?
Okay, so let me, so play out for me how you see this playing out in real time at a planning board meeting.
What, for example, looking at layout in relation to natural environment, one?
What you're proposing. So, we go through the intent of the senior, or the purpose of the senior housing bylaw.
As homework, you just read it. Just read it as homework.
Oh, okay, I'm trying to understand.
It says, "Review prior to the meeting."
Okay.
Review prior to the meeting. That just means get familiar with it.
Okay.
And that's, and the reason is to organize discussions. Then what you do is you just lead a discussion on layout in relationship to the natural environment. And you look at it and you comment on it. And you see where it feels like it's in alignment, where it, you know, where it seems to fit the bylaws and where there are questions, concerns, more information needed. And you get a good idea, it's just like the continuation of the checklist. You get a good idea of where the board stands.
No, I get it. I'm just trying to figure out where this fits in. I mean, yes, everybody should have read this six months ago. So, they can reread it.
Yes.
They understand what the purpose is and what the findings process is. So, then we go back and hopefully people are a little more intelligent. But let's play this out, is at the next meeting, well, the next meeting, we're not going to be having, we're not talking about blasting, we're not talking about hydrology, we're not talking about geohydrology. The only thing we could be talking about is traffic.
Traffic and parking.
Parking. And what else?
We could, we could start on some of Jonathan's themes for discussion, if the board would like.
So, the point of the themes for discussion is instead of starting like with parking or signage, you're beginning at the beginning. And that's why 8.1.12 is so germane to this, and it's why the stormwater management organization is so germane to this, is because if you begin at the end with the details or the peer review, you have no context for any of the discussion. Whereas if you start off with, how does this thing sit on the land? Where are the buildings in relationship to the land? How do the buildings fit together? How do they fit the bylaw? Just in a broad brush stroke, and then what you can do is say, okay, now I understand that. Now, how does that fit into the context of, I don't know, the specifics of parking or lighting or something like that?
Oh, and again, I'm just trying to understand the context of how this conversation will occur. Is this another meeting similar to what we've just done?
It should be an internal discussion.
Okay. You know, when you make these proposals, you need to help contextualize how you see these occurring, so...
We have, the board has a tremendous amount of information in front of it right now, and...
Charlie, we've just hit the tip of the iceberg.
So, we have a lot of information, but we've never yet talked about anything in this list. And these are the starting points. Not signage, not lighting, not, you know... Where's this particular sidewalk or something like that?
In some ways, we put the horse before, we put the cart before the horse. We go to the engineering issues first because they're sort of cut and dry, as opposed to saying, do we really like what this project is going to do for the town and for the neighborhood because it is a special permit? So, we have, if we're going to grant them the authority to cluster and to get the special permit, we have to like what it does for the town and the neighborhood.
I would love to...
Prescribes that we need to have a meeting with the permetee to get him in here and tell him this is the information.
Well, maybe we should discuss it among ourselves with a set of plans around and sort of say, you know, what do we like and not like about this? I'm particularly, I mean, I have a lot of after plans, but I don't really have quite all the before plans, you know? And, you know, how much ledge is there and how many trees? And what's getting torn down in order to get to the after?
That's my point.
But if we had all that sitting around, we could sit around and discuss it.
We can't discuss it until the permetee brings in that information to us. It's their job to do that, not our job to go out and get it.
No, that's true.
So, that's fine. We can have this list of stuff, but they got to be involved in this discussion because we're going to be asking them questions. And they got to have the answers. And they got to know how to get the answers before we ask them the questions.
Well, I think, you know, having a contour map before and after, having a tree or forest or planting map before, after, and possibly having a couple of elevations before, after, is almost enough to just sit around and say, is this worth it? Should we give them a special permit so they can do this?
Yeah, and therein is, I'm having a real problem with this, because you're prejudging, you've just changed the rules of the process and project to date. You're going back to the end of the project and saying, and I'll use this for illustration, and maybe it's overly dramatic, but I think it's an apt analogy, is you're looking at it and saying, sitting around saying, well, you know, I really don't like, and this is, I'm making this up, I really don't like this project. I don't think it fits in the natural environment. They're cutting down too many trees. They're doing too much blasting. I just don't like it.
No, I'm not saying I don't like it. I'm saying it doesn't fit with the natural environment, with the neighborhood, and a whole bunch of other...
That's it, I don't like it.
Well, okay, but it's a whole bunch of criteria that are part of our bylaws.
Let me finish.
So, I, you know...
Yeah, but you see...
To not like it for those reasons is perfectly reasonable.
The reasons that are based on the bylaws.
Reasons that are based on the bylaw, yeah.
I think this is, well, again, now we're getting it. We're going to the end and making these subjective decisions. You know, we just went through this, wait a minute, let me finish.
Sure.
We just went through this checklist with a list of questions we had that we wanted the applicant to answer. We wanted to wait until we got... We wanted to wait until we got those answers before we could actually have an intelligent discussion. Now, I have no problem for us individually going back and reading the planning board findings and the purpose of the senior housing bylaw and keeping that in our minds as we go forward here. But to go back and start talking about these very general, non-specific issues before you've given the applicant the chance to answer the questions we just outlined is entirely unfair. And it's, it's an, it's like going around and picking lint out of your navel at this point in time. It's just totally irresponsible process. And it's not one I want to be involved in because it ends up prejudging the process by sitting around saying, well, we don't think it fits in the context of the neighborhood, when we've just asked them to answer questions about slope and the design and how many trees it's gonna take down.
Need not be a yes or no. It can, it can be, it can easily be. If you want to do this kind of development, maybe, you know, this part of it has to be moved here, the number of units has to be expanded or contracted, the, somehow it has to be bent...
You are prejudging the project before you've even given the applicant the opportunity to answer the checklist that you guys insisted that we have. So you can't have it both ways. It can't work that way. It's just not gonna work that way. And I think you're really going off the deep end, trying to do this in a context of a conversation before you've given the applicant the opportunity to answer the questions that we just went through and spent two hours trying to identify to have them answer. And if they answer the questions to your satisfaction, then you can have this conversation as to whether they've met those or not met those.
All right, we can wait for a little more information and then have the conversation, if that's what you prefer to do. But we have to have the conversation because I don't think it's fair to the applicant to go through all of the engineering and technical details if we want him to change and alter the plan in some major way.
Yeah, the questions come out of the discussion. What we've gone over today is the checklist, which is the bylaws, which they've had, and they understand completely. What we've done is trying to organize our own thoughts, our own discussion. And that's where the questions will come out, that they may or may not want to respond to. But that's really the source of what we're trying to get at here.
What? What are you trying to get at?
No, if I, if I could interject here, I think that once we have the plans that comply with 8.1.12, and then we have the existing plans, we can then have this discussion because we will see, you know, the topography of the land as it is now. And we do have the, the plans that show the slopes, and some of them are quite steep. And I've looked at them in depth. And so we can make that, we'll have that ability to compare the topography and the existing plan. And at that point, we can have this discussion and it may emerge that there are some actions that the applicant could take that would address some of the concerns that some of the members have with respect to...
Right.
How this project is configured. And it may be that there are solutions that will satisfy board members and the applicant, but we have yet to get to that step. But I, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we really do need to see the, the steep slopes and the woodland and the existing conditions in much more detail than what was presented by the applicant with just the simple contour lines. Because my, my recollection is the existing condition maps were just a series of lines. You know, unlike the as-built plans, which actually had the slopes themselves, they actually had the contour numbers.
Correct.
And you could actually see, you know, how steep some of the slopes were. We don't have the equivalent of that with respect to the...
And it's just highly relevant to our assessment of the project.
Right. So then you can ask these questions when you've got, when you've got an answer to contextualize them. Because right now, you're just asking these questions out of the blue without any context. So get the information that we've just agreed we need to get, then you can ask the question, does it meet the intent of the bylaw? Does it fit within the neighborhood? Does it comply with the elements of the bylaw that we're, that we're reviewing? We just can't have this in a non-context discussion. It's just irresponsible and it's impossible for anybody to follow what the board is doing in any kind of logical sequence, which is what you all have been asking to do and created a wonderful checklist and process. And then suddenly we're going back and saying, well, what do we, you know, what do we think? And does it feel this way? I mean, we can't do that. It's just not, it's not reasonable. We can do what Marnie suggests, I think that's the compromise. I could be wrong, and if I'm wrong, then tell me.
I think you made it.
No, I think we're, I think what we're trying to do is put a context on everything and also going back to the basic thing that everything is related. You know, the, the way this, the choices made during the course of the construction touch a lot of different areas, from stormwater to erosion to lighting to...
Exactly my point. So let's go through those elements that we've asked the applicant or we've identified for ourselves that we need to get answers to. And then we can apply this and say, does it meet the intent of the senior housing bylaw? Does it meet the intent of section 8.2.12? That's all fine, but it's gotta have, it's gotta be grounded in a specific element of the bylaw, not just sort of general, the natural environment, you know? When we get to the conclusion of answering those questions, fine, because that's gonna be part of our decision-making process.
So, just so I can understand, so you're suggesting that we get all the information that we ever want from the applicant, then we go through detailed technical review, and then the very last thing we do is we look at how this thing hangs together?
That would be, that, that's the logic, I believe, makes the most sense. How do you prejudge, how do you, you know, think of it as a court? You know, the defense lawyers and the prosecutor have to make their arguments and then the jury has to make a decision. We've got incomplete information as to what this project is going to look like in its final form or its current form. We're asking for more detailed information so that we can make an intelligent, fact-based decision to the best of our ability. And then we're going to have to go back, as Marnie started, said at the beginning, these bylaws are, can be confusing, subjective, conflicting, unclear, foggy, and we're going to have to figure out and ask these questions. These are the questions.
But, you know, in some ways, that is more burdensome...
Yeah.
And unfair on the client.
I think we can address these issues.
Absolutely agree.
If you have, if you have doubts about the scale of this project and everything else on this particular site, doing what they particularly want to do, I love 50-unit senior housing projects, but you know, maybe it's just, it's like a round peg in a square hole on this particular site. It just, or it has to be scaled back. Those are the things we should, we should've, should try and get out of the way to begin with so that the client doesn't draw multiple sets of blueprints and have multiple engineering studies. As we suggest modifications, we come to an agreement to begin with about the size and scope and scale and some other features of the project. And then they do all their engineering and design work and, and they're done, as opposed to doing all that upfront, handing it to us and saying that, you know, now what do you think?
So I'd like to, to talk about something very specific here.
Can I ask a question first?
I'm talking.
I understand. I'm asking if I can put in.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking right now.
Keep going.
So, the, number one in the themes for discussion, it says, "Layout in relationship to the natural environment." Okay, now I'm gonna read, remember we said the first step they haven't done, which is identify the conservation areas? Okay, so let's say they'd done the second step, they, let's, the first step, rather, they've identified the conservation areas, we have a plan in hand, okay? Your bylaws say, "The second step in the design process is to define and delineate the area that will contain the buildings, roadways, other site improvements and amenities for the residents of the development. To the maximum extent feasible, the proposed development area shall consist of land outside the identified conservation area." That's the second step. And that's what I'm proposing in my framework. As soon as we have that, that, that conservation areas plan, we take that second step. We don't wait till the end of the process just before we vote, it's the second step.
Right. And, and that's what I meant. I, I was merely suggesting that we have our discussion once we get the delineation of the steep slopes.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And the only, the only disconnect here is, is we have it right here, we don't accept that, we get it from the applicant, we have the applicant present, but it is the second step, and that's...
And Bill's right. I mean, if there are fundamental issues with respect to any issue as a result of what we see in that...
The applicant should know sooner rather than later.
Exactly.
And it is, it is item one in the, in the framework. That's item one, which is, it corresponds precisely to step two in 8.1.12.
All right.
It is, it is this task. So, so I'm agreeing that we should get the steep slope, slope plan, but then the next thing to do is to do step two, not review signage or septic plan or something like that, or some arcane technical review. We need to begin at the beginning, and that's what's fair to the applicant. It's what's fair to the planning board, it's what's fair to the public, it's what's fair to the town of Hamilton.
Yes. And the only part that was, was missing in your suggestion was, you suggested that the board do this without, in it, like we were doing now, without any context, and that's why I reacted so...
We've been requesting this for some time, Emile went ahead on his own and did it. That was the only reason it came up that way. We have been requesting this for some time.
Did, Emile, did he use 18% or 25%?
He used 25%.
I think 25, but, so 18 would be more area than I have.
Would it be difficult to adjust your map to do 18? I mean, is, I'm not really conversant with how you, you prepare them.
It's general shading, it's not...
I don't, would it be unduly burdensome to...
What you have to do is go through the 40-scale drawings and identify where, where the, the distance between all the contours are that would satisfy an 18% and then delineate that. So 25% is a steeper grade, you do 18, it's gonna be more area than what I've shown. And again, I, I did this on my own as a, I was curious myself.
Right, it would be burdensome to...
What actually, you know, testing conditions on top of the hill as a starting point.
That's typical, that's typical of any kind of design work, any site design work, whatever you're working on.
Well, it would be burdensome to redo it.
What are you working with? What does a site look like? Sorry?
Burdensome to redo it, that's my question.
Yeah. But if they do it, then they'll do it with 18%, so that's fine.
So, there's been resistance on this board to do this process, so that's why we've been trying to push this ahead, just to be plain and simple about it. And, and I look forward to more collaboration and more focus on, on being fair and transparent to the applicant, to the board and the town.
All right. So we've looked at this, so I think we've agreed that we're going to ask the applicant to address 8.1.2 and delineate the slopes at 18%. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
8.1.12.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So, and the objective of this is to get sort of a before and after picture of the site in terms of topography and in terms of trees and foliage. And anything else? Before and after?
Those are the primary ones.
The primary ones?
Agreed.
And then, maybe we should have a meeting with the petitioner's architect, designer? Who would we want to sit down and brainstorm and see if we could actually make this work? Who would, who would you invite from the petitioner's side to participate in a discussion? A little charrette?
That's a really good question, and what, what it will get at is what the impulse, back to Patrick's point, you know, what was the impulse of this project? And, and that's a great question to put before the applicant. And I, and I think Patrick stated it the most eloquently, I hope it's recorded somewhere. So...
I think that might be great at engineering.
Yes.
Have a working meeting as opposed to have them for, meeting after meeting after meeting, throw stuff down at us and say, here's the detail about it.
Right.
Sit down with, with them, somebody, and sort of say, here's what we really don't like, here's some things that we, you know, and try and see if there's something there.
What is also wonderful, a wonderful tool, is we requested, I requested a 3D model, which I gather they did, but they used it to create some renderings, which were not particularly descriptive. If they have that 3D model, that's a tremendously useful tool for this, all this discussion around slopes.
Being a computer model?
Yes, yes, they generated a...
Not making all...
No, 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 they generate, they generated a computer model of at least a portion of the site, and that was why I requested that model, not so they'd generate perspectives of the entry, because it was, it was, it's an extremely useful tool for a planning board and the applicant to discuss slopes and topography and design. It's a really, really powerful tool.
They already have the contours, though, and that, I'm just, so they'd be relatively easy for them to identify the 18% with the contours they have. It's not like they have to create new information. So I just thought that would be easier, but either way.
I'm not pressing for them to do that, I'm just giving context to why I asked for a 3D model.
So, what are we doing next meeting?
I think the question on the table is, the themes for discussion, in my opinion, are the next step, following your bylaws. Not my opinion, but following the bylaws. I was, I'm trying all the way through to follow the bylaws. And I was hunting through my papers and I can't seem to find it, but Patrick had, in his framework for how to move forward, he had, he touched on a lot of these things, it's just they were scattered through the, through the, the technical review. And I'm just trying to take those and consolidate them and put them up front so we have a better, a more methodical way to do this, so that the, there's, there's more, there's more opportunity for a good dialogue with the applicant to manage to success here.
And what is that dialogue that we're gonna have? It's gonna be 8.1.12?
I think it's the, I think it's the three or four discussion points on the themes. That what we need to do is we need to talk with the petitioner about these themes and say, if we can somehow, you know, reach a, a, a meeting of the minds whereby some similar project can be done on the site without totally destroying the neighborhood and the environment. And if it can't, I mean, I'm all in favor of senior housing, I'm all in favor of senior, clustered senior housing, I think everybody here is. This is a terribly difficult project. And if we can come to a general agreement, then we can go back to working out the details.
And my firm opinion is, this is a very unique site, it's full of possibility and it's, it's, it's full of potential, and it's a developable site. And I also favor the idea of clustered senior housing, and I would love to collaborate and manage to success.
We'll see how this plays out.
Do you have enough to... I, one thing that I, I do really wanna say to the board with all due...
I, one thing that I, I do really want to say to the board with all due respect, it is not the board's responsibility to design the project for the applicant.
Absolutely understood.
Understood.
Absolutely understood.
That being said, you know, my list for what the next meeting should be is the applicant's response, plan, approach, et cetera, relative to 8.1.2, relative to step one, step two. That should respond to slopes at 18%. I think there are enough people who are really interested in having an understanding of how much vegetation is left, how much is going to be gone, to see that mapped. I also think it's probably worthwhile for us to have an understanding and a presentation from their designers relative to the architectural discussion that we've had a while ago. I do know that, you know, again, we need to start getting into traffic and parking. Those are discrete things that I think that we can get some, you know, progress made on that as well. If we could undertake those four items, I think that we could make some headway.
Parking is embedded in general in theme two.
In the site design, yes.
Absolutely. But in general form, not to try to take a vote on it, but just to feel the whole thing in its entirety. What I think you're going to find is that there, a lot of the, a lot of the themes are going to intertwine and the, the, the answers to those concerns are going to be the sorts of things where you make one small change and it solves seven problems. There's, everything is so intertwined on this site.
Okay. Well, we'll try it and see how it works out.
Okay. When is the next meeting?
Well, we got to do-
Well, we say the holidays and maybe the petitioner has some.
The next meeting is December the 21st.
So is the applicant going to have sufficient time to produce the documentation that we're seeking?
I, I anticipate much of what responds to those items, we already have in our paperwork. It's a matter of them re-presenting much of that to us, because I know their site plan does a lot of things that, you know, we haven't really recognized. And I think it's important to allow the, the applicant to help us to refocus on things that are embedded in that set of plans and all of the documentation that we've gotten so far.
I agree. There's tremendous information in this site plan. There's not much more information that we really need to get into the heart of this.
And I think-
So then we need another meeting with the petitioner that is not an open public hearing.
I, I really resist not having open public hearings. I think that given the level of demand, given the level of interest, given the attendance that we typically have at our meetings, I think that we need to keep these as open public meetings.
Plus, if it was not open and public, you would have to have enough sufficient reason to make it what would essentially be, I can't think of the word.
We make it non-participatory?
Well, you can't-
I mean, I'm just trying to keep it going and rather than, than, than have, I mean, there's, still is a lot of opposition to this plan. And if we let the public participate, it's just, I fear it's going to come in, going to deteriorate.
Well, at some point, the public is going to have to participate. We've got to bite that bullet.
This is a public hearing process that we need to, we need to maintain.
You'd be going into executive session if you didn't have-
What did, what did we do this evening?
We talked about process.
No, in terms of the organization of the meeting. Is this a, we have people listening in?
Yep.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, but they're not participating.
Absolutely.
We're not letting them in the meeting because we wish to talk.
Because we were talking about process, internal planning board process and procedures.
And we're still self-flagellating over our chart.
So it's, it's internal board business. The public can comment on, you know, but it really is how we are proceeding, what, how we're, what we're going to use as the tools, the structure, the format, as opposed to the project. As we started out and said, we cannot discuss the project in any detail, blasting hydrology, traffic, stormwater, et cetera. So next meeting will be public meeting. We will cover the topics. I'm wondering if it makes sense to have Jill here in person and/or her architect or engineer.
I think, personally, I think that would be good and, and a subset of plans carefully chosen for everyone to look at, even if it's just a rehab, you know, finding the right things in the pile that we already have.
If we can fit that into her schedule, I think that's a good idea.
So one clarification I'd like to make on requesting the information from the applicant is what's really great about that set over there is it's really detailed. What's really challenging about that set over there is it's in large-scale fragments. And it's really hard for a layperson to understand it because you have to memorize things and stitch them together. What I think would be helpful is for these additional delineations that they create, for us to actually also say that they need to be hundred scale on one sheet of paper and not, and not match lines like they have before, just so, for the benefit of folks to understand it more easily. I'm just trying to be, to, Mr. Chairman, to your point, I'm trying to be really specific so that, so that we hit this, it's, it's sharpshooting. So one to 100 fits on a sheet of paper and you can show enough information and it'll, and you can get all of the parts and pieces that are in that set into one plan. It's what their existing conditions plan is. That's, that's one to 100 in that set. So they have all that information in that scale.
Existing conditions plan. So you're going to be looking at the site on one sheet of paper?
Yes.
That's going to be pretty fine detail.
Yes. Well, it's, I, I've done it. I made my own plan so I could understand it. Emile's made his own plan and they're, and they're each at 100 scale, so it can be done.
Yeah, but you guys are in the business.
They are in the business as well.
Pardon me?
The applicants are in the business as well.
Yeah, no, no, I'm talking about the general public.
It's, it's actually pretty easy to see. It's a graphic, it's a simple graphic. You don't have to see every little label on the drawing. It's, it's a, it's an overview. It's a 20,000-foot overview.
Okay. So the only other thing we have to do is approval of minutes of November 16th, 2021. Have everybody read them? Looked them?
Maybe we should put them out.
Yes.
The board members could come by for a week and look.
Yes.
Any comments, Marnie? This is draft number two.
Marnie, I'm going to suggest you might want to leave the draft numbers off when you give them to us. For your own internal purposes, they're fine, but we might end up having somebody say we want to see draft one and compare them. This is the final draft. That's all we need to know.
Well, it's a-
Well, actually, it's, if, if anybody moves to amend the minutes.
Then, then, then what you say is, I move to, I move to accept the minutes with the, with the amendments as, as made. That's all that has to happen.
I think when they're uploaded, when Patrick uploads them-
I'm sorry, can't hear you?
I think when Patrick uploads the minutes, he deletes the draft number.
Right. But when you're showing it to us, you leave it on. I'm suggesting you take it off when you show it to us. We're looking essentially at the finished minutes. So we don't care what draft it is.
It's just a labeling question, as opposed to fine, you know, final versus draft.
Somebody could come along and say, I want to see draft one.
Okay.
Are we reviewing number, November 16th or November 9th?
Number 16. This, November 16th, draft number two.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes of November 16th.
Go ahead, second.
I have, I have a, just a small correction to make. Sorry.
Go ahead.
And it just is to match what we talked about just now in the, in going over the, the checklist. So that it, this annotates the, or it references which items were, it says it's in need of further review instead of satisfied. So I think Marnie's done a good job of getting most of it. The one that I saw was the, I think, 8.2.12, the sensitivity of the GPOD general. And then 8.2.1, oh, go ahead. I think Emile has some.
8.2.16 is the other one that is missing.
I concur.
What, what's, what is the amendment you want to make on the?
I'm looking at-
Page two, second paragraph.
General requirements.
What sections were discussed?
General requirements, 8.2.16.3 is here.
Three and six.
A general description, 8.2.16, general description.
I'm looking at you.
Okay, the preparatory language.
Preparatory language, yep. And then preparatory language of 8.2.12. Same, same stuff.
Yeah.
And with that, I have no further comments.
So somebody want to make a motion to?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of November 16th as amended this evening by Jonathan Port.
Second.
All those in favor? We'll go and do, we'll do, is it unanimous?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. It is unanimous, the board approves the minutes as amended of November 16th. Okay.
So we also received minutes from November 9th.
Yes, late today.
And, and it's, it's a pretty long document and I haven't really had a chance to absorb it.
Even seen it.
Okay. So then we can put those off?
Yeah.
Put those off to the next meeting.
Okay, great.
All right. Any other board business, Patrick?
10 o'clock. Emile, if you don't mind, if you wouldn't provide us with a quick and dirty description of where we're at with the master planning committee, that'd be great.
I'll try to keep this brief. Following the visiting, visioning session, which I think everybody was familiar with, I hope, fairly recently, early December, I think that was a success. We had a turnout of 50, 50-plus people there. And it was the consultant, Weston and Sampson, I thought did a great job. Jim Reardon, who was the presenter, did a great job organizing. It was a presentation describing the process to the people. And then there was a breakout into individual tables of about eight to 10 tables, six, roughly five, six people per table. And then there were two major questions that were asked of the people at that. And I, I was really delighted with the results. The people, I thought, were really taking it very seriously. I thought they were, enjoyed the process and I think they, they gave us some very good information following that meeting. We started the survey, drafting the survey questions. Rick Mitchell is on the subcommittee, Jack Lawrence, David Wanger is on the subcommittee, and I was on the subcommittee. And the four of us tried to put together a survey questions and we based it on the 2004 master plan surveys that were done. We thought we could maybe pick up some trends over the last 17 years. And so we used that as a basis and we developed questions that we thought were, that tried to inform the various elements or sections within the master plan, such as open space and natural resources, how to grow, how to, what we want to protect and so forth. So we came up with some questions and we decided to kind of, at one point, we felt that Weston and Sampson, since they're preparing the master plan, would take that information and prepare a follow-up using the guidance from the subcommittee to prepare, to complete the, the survey that would inform their, their master plan. And then we would review it and approve it in the future at some point. So that's the, that's where we stand at this point. We just got an update in terms of the schedule and it looks like they're going to be completed around, I think, September, October next year. That's the, that was the schedule. That's kind of slipped a little bit over time. So we're, that's about it in a nutshell, where we are at this stage.
Thank you, Emile. That's great. That committee does meet on Thursday night of this week.
Right. Via Zoom.
Via Zoom.
I'd just love to take a second and thank everybody who's worked on that process. I attended the workshop and it was inspiring and I know that every, the committee has put a lot of work into it and I just wanted to thank you for that work.
Okay.
Another item that I did want to make people aware of, the town has received the project eligibility letter, which is basically the state's acceptance of the 40B project that has been proposed for 421 Asbury Street. I emailed with Andrew DeFranza from Harbor Light Community Partners today. He did tell me that he wouldn't have an application and all the paperwork prepared until probably late in January.
And he thinks, based on the last testimony before this, he might have a project built in about five years.
Yeah, I didn't ask him that, but you know, that's something that he had discussed with this board earlier.
That may, that may depend a lot on what, how the administration decides to fund this program in the next couple of years.
That application was for funding?
It did not hard and fast commit to it, but it did say that the state supported it and they would look for funding sources for it.
Right. But when you referenced Andrew submitting an application, what, what was the, what is the application exactly?
It is for 45 affordable units.
Oh, well, he's got to get his money first, I guess.
Oh, yeah. No, typically it takes two or, two or three rounds before they get financing. Anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay. Unless anybody wants to spend the night here, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. We are now adjourned.